Welcome, everybody, to Tuesday, November 2nd, Half Moon Bay City Council Meeting. Welcome fellow council members, staff, and members of the public. We first will actually have, let's see, who it is tonight, is it Christopher? No, sorry, Nicholas, who will like, explain our Spanish translation service for those who'd like to listen and participate in Spanish. Thanks, Nicholas.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. A todos los que están queriendo escuchar esta reunión en español, en la parte de abajo de su navegador van a encontrar el dibujo de un globo. Tienen que hacer clic allí y escoger la versión español, así ustedes van a estar escuchando todo en español. Muchas gracias. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Nicholas. And there should be an icon appearing on the bottom of the screen for that translation service. Immediately. I don't think. Is it up yet? Does anyone else see it on their screen? There we go. There it goes. Great. So, yes, for those like Spanish interpretation, they just need to click on the interpretation icon on the bottom of your screen. Thank you. Let's begin with a roll call, please.
Councilmember Penrose.
Here.
Councilmember Jimenez.
Here.
Councilmember Rarback.
Here.
Vice Mayor Reddick.
Here.
Mayor Brownstone.
Here.
You have a call.
Thank you. We will now begin with public forum. And let me just say a few words about that. Public forum is for the public to comment on anything they want that's not on the agenda. So you can also ask a clarifying question or anything on the consent calendar. But this is not a time to comment on agendized items. And tonight, we have the imminent domain action agendized and Census 2020 update. And a resolution staff report on measure D allocations. So this is not a time to comment on those items. You will have an opportunity to comment on those items when on the agenda, we speak to those items a little bit later. So for now, though, you could talk about any, make a comment about anything else. And to do that, all you have to do is raise your hand in the participant, you click on the participants icon on the bottom of your screen. And click on your name, you can raise your hand. And I'm just going to wait a few minutes. Let's see how many other folks we have who'd like to comment. Okay, two folks, and they'll set the clock for 10 minutes each.
Thank you. Our first speaker is Danielle. Danielle, you have two minutes.
Hi, good evening. My name is Danielle Lacampagna. I don't think you can see me. I have a flyer that I wanted to show. But I'm coming here from Citizens for San Mateo County Gun Buyback. And our, our group wanted to let you know that the sheriffs are putting on another gun buyback on December 11th, 2021, so a couple of months away, or two months away, from 10 to 2 in San Carlos at 1,000 Skyway Road. And our group did send your city clerk some information, including a flyer and a postcard that some of the towns and cities are sending out to their residents that have gotten a lot of residents to come out when they get that postcard. But just wanted to tell you that, that the buyback is coming up December 11th, in case you have residents that are interested or council members that are interested in attending. And we give out $100 for handguns, shotguns, and rifles, and $200 for assault weapons. And it's anonymous. And the sheriffs do all the heavy lifting. They are the ones that, that manage the whole event. And our group just helps with a couple of, of items like fundraising and greeting people and this, the sheriffs, Redmond City Police, and a few officers, Belmont Police, and the City of San Carlos. So thank you very much. Just wanted to make that announcement.
Thank you, Danielle, for joining us tonight and letting us know about the gun buyback. And Jessica, we can put that out on our e-news as we get closer to the event, so.
We are, yes. Thank you.
Great. Thanks for giving us, us the early notification for those who didn't know.
Harsh, she have two minutes?
Hi. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Yeah. Okay, so I live on Kelly Avenue and moved here about two years ago. And me and a lot of other neighbors on Kelly are concerned about a lot of the traffic and the safety.
You know, Harsh, we, I think you still have your mic on, but can anyone else hear him? Okay, yeah, we can't hear you. Even though your mic doesn't appear to be on.
Seems he may have lost service.
Yeah. Okay, sorry about that. Seemed to have lost you.
Okay.
Anyone else?
No other speakers.
Okay. All right.
We have one more.
One more. Maybe Harsh will come back in between.
Lee, you have two minutes?
Hello, I'm Harsh's neighbor.
Oh, hi.
I'll, I'll try to fill in for, for what he was saying. We had a, a little get together with, with people on our street here on Kelly. And we know that in the plan, long term, is to, you know, Kelly is a beautiful, is part of the beautification of Half Moon Bay project and that they, that we'd like to to help in any way we can to try and move forward. Putting a, a little bit more sidewalk on the north, or sorry, on the eastern side of, of, I guess, Assas Lorraine towards one in a couple of places where it's missing. As well as, as doing something to, if we can, and to help put the power lines under, underground. If you just go one block south of Kelly, you can see the difference. And it isn't until you return that you realize what a difference to the beautification of that street it would be. And I realize it's an expensive thing to do, but hopefully some of the infrastructure money that's out there in the world might be something that could do, could be done. And we have a, a, like a flyer where people signed up that said that they would be willing to do, you know, essentially put some of our own money in, though we would just be a small drop in a bucket for a project like that. Anyway, just wanted to make sure we kind of keep that on the, on the radar, because I know it's something that could fall off, because it's, Kelly's just a small street, but it is one that hundreds and thousands, or feels like thousands of people troop up and down, particularly on the weekends. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Lee. I promise you that Kelly Street is on all our radar screens. So thank you, and thanks for helping out Harsh there when you lost this connection. I really appreciate that. Okay. I think that's it. And am I correct, Jessica? There's no more speakers?
Yes.
And we will now officially close public forum and move on to proclamations and presentations. And the first proclamation, we have two proclamations this evening. The first is proclamation, United Against Hate Week Proclamation. And I just have a few comments to make about that. United Against Hate Week is a call for local civic action to stop hate and address implicit biases that are a dangerous threat to the safety and civility of our neighborhoods, town, and cities. When communities participate in United Against Hate Week, they are making a commitment to make everyone feel safe and supported. Communities can counter acts of racism and tolerance and hate by engaging diverse communities, faith advocacy, and school groups to participate and help lead meaningful, locally-driven actions during United Against Hate Week. The City of Half Moon Bay stands strongly in support of our diverse communities, honoring and protecting every individual, regardless of race, color, creed, gender, religion, ethnicity, nationality, orientation, or identity. Together, we are United Against Hate this week and all weeks. We all stand stronger together. So thank you to Berkeley Mayor Jesse, Jesse Aradine, for spearheading this alliance in the Bay Area. And to his chief of staff, Jaclyn McCormick, who I believe has joined us and is here tonight to accept such an important proclamation. Thank you for being here, Jaclyn, and I would like to say a few words.
Yes, I want to thank the City of Half Moon Bay for participating in this year's event. This event started by happenstance. It started basically in 2017, when we had a lot of people coming to Berkeley. And especially after the tragic events of Charlottesville. And we're created the, you know, we, the Berkeley Stand United Against Hate signs, and Oakland joined in. It was a way for the community to stand up and make a statement that while we may not want to participate in the protests, we certainly, as a community, would come together to say that hate has no place here. And what was amazing about that experience was that Berkeley and Oakland both printed 20,000 signs, and in the City of Berkeley, they were gone in a day and a half. And you still see them throughout the community. The next year, not in our town, Patrice O'Neal is the chairman of that particular organization who has been working on hate and responding to hate crimes for well over 20 years. She and I co-chair this event. She brought the initial 13 communities who ended up making signs that year, individual signs. And we started United Against Hate Week. Our first year was 2018. This will be our fourth year. So we have grown from 13 cities to this year being over 100 communities just in the Bay Area. Communities and organizations and Los Angeles County, this is their second year. They're blowing it out of the park. Attorney General Ron Bonta is supporting this effort and is also going to be promoting the event during the week. It's a week of visibility, but it doesn't mean that our work doesn't stop all year long. The intent is to bring awareness to United Against Hate and start building those connections as a community where we can stand up and assist our community when hate happens, but more importantly, prevent it from happening in the first place. So I appreciate everything you're doing and your enthusiasm in supporting this. We look forward to you continuing and getting the word out to family and friends, not just in California, but we've actually grown nationally. We have quite a few cities throughout the nation that are now participating. We'd love to see this grow to be a national event every year and, and know that it started right up here in the Bay Area and that you were part of it. So thank you very much for this honor and for being part of this.
Thank you, Jaclyn, for being here, and thank you for all the work Berkeley community and others have done to really grow and expand this movement across the country. So, thank you. Okay. Well, my next proclamation is our Veterans Day proclamation. And let me first begin by recognizing all those who've been part of the US military, our veterans, our active-duty servicemembers, guardsmen, and reservists. Your service and sacrifice have kept our country safe and free, and for that, we thank you. We celebrate Veterans Day on the anniversary of the armistice ending World War I on the 11th hour of the 11th day of the 11th month. 103 years later, we expand on those traditions, celebrating the heroes among us who have continued to serve our community even after taking off the military uniform. It's important that we continue to serve with them, appreciate them, and thank them by giving back to our community in any way we can. So let us continue this tradition each year, celebrating and honoring those that have fought for our country and continue to do so. Thank you from the City of Half Moon Bay. Now, tonight, we are both fortunate and honored to have with us a member of our own staff who was a veteran of the war in Afghanistan, having served two tours. And he is our Public Works Superintendent, Todd Seeley, who will accept this proclamation on behalf of veterans tonight.
Mayor Brownstone, thank you so much for having me this evening, and thank you so much for the wonderful proclamation. I, I think it must be said that the only reason that I'm here this evening is that we had another veteran scheduled with a much more interesting story than myself, who's a longtime coastside resident and unfortunately fellow ill and wasn't able to make it this evening. But it just goes to show you, I mean, I, I believe the gentleman was 100 years old. So the, the breadth and span of veterans that we have living on the coast side is actually pretty impressive. So it, it is, it is good to be here with you this evening. I'm, I'm actually used to presenting to you instead of the other way around, but I will gladly take the relieved pressure this evening. And I just want to let you all know that serving in the Army was a great honor in my life. And now I get to use the many lessons learned at home and abroad to serve this great community. Obviously, there's some, some differences in the way we go about doing that. But I think, I think it's important that we cherish the, the veterans that we have on the coast side and give them the support that they need to transition back into life as we wind down all the wars overseas and make sure that the resources are there for them. And I think by you guys having this proclamation this evening, it's a, it's a good, it's a good gesture to all the veterans out here who may not be aware of what the city does and stuff like that. But thank you for having me this evening, and a special thanks to all the amazing men and women who, who have served their country. Thank you.
Thank you, Todd. Thank you for being here. Thank you for your personal service and also to be here on behalf of all those others who have served our country. So thank you. All right. Now, we'll have a presentation and I think Maz, if everything's working, will do the introductions. Maz, are you connected? Yes, yes.
Good evening.
Great.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, and members of the council. I'm happy to introduce our colleagues at SAM Trans, Millie Tolleson and Jessica Epstein, who are here tonight to talk about the great efforts that they've been working on and all the community outreach on the Reimagine SAM Trans project. And we, I thank you both for being available to, to talk to our, to our community, and I will turn it over to, I believe, Jessica, who will start us off.
Yeah. Good evening, council members. Just wanted to say a few words. This is actually exciting for us. This is our very last public presentation that we're doing, our Reimagine SAM Trans. We'll be, we've been at this for quite some time. This is our third and final round, and we have a recommended network that we are getting feedback on now. We are very happy to present tonight. Take your comments, have a conversation. I do want to make sure, just to call out for everyone, that we're taking comments through November 8th from the public. You can do that at reimagine samtrans.com. And Millie will have more information. You know, Half Moon Bay is very unique. It is very different than our other service. It is rural and agricultural. It has a vibrant downtown and beaches. It has the need to get people efficiently over the hill. Nowhere else in the county is quite like Half Moon Bay and the surrounding areas. So we really try to take that into consideration when coming up with the recommendations for this community. So with that, I'm going to turn it over to Millie, and we'll, we'll give you our presentation. Thank you.
Okay, good evening, council. Thank you very much for having me. My name is Millie Tolleson. I manage the strategic planning team at SAM Trans. And I have a brief slide presentation for you tonight. I'm going to quickly give some background on the project and a little flavor of kind of some of the input we've received from Half Moon Bay over the course of this project. And then dive into really the recommended changes to the bus network. In particular, the changes in Half Moon Bay. And then I'll wrap up by again reiterating the ways that people can be, give us their input during this third and final round of outreach, and then happy to take any questions or comments at the end. So this is our project timeline, and we're excited to be inching our way over to the right side, which is on the end of the project. This project has included three now rounds of public input. And following this round of public input, we will be seeking our board's adoption of the recommended changes to the bus system and then beginning implementation of the changes next summer, summer 2022. And just a little flavor also of the, the outreach that we did in Half Moon Bay last spring. We held four multilingual public meetings, including one meeting virtually, of course, that was focused on changes on the coast and the alternatives on the coast. That meeting was multilingual, as mentioned. We also did a number of community pop-up events and presentations, including at the Strawflower Shopping Center in Lindemar, at the Pacific Apire. Talked to the senior coast siders and the Pacific Climate Coalition. And I believe my colleague Christie presented to you all last, last time, and we also went to the Midcoast Community Council. And finally, did a specific bus operator outreach event with our bus operators who drive the routes out on the coast. And throughout all of these outreach efforts, we had a survey. We engaged with more than 1,300 people throughout the county at various pop-up events. Some of the key themes, this is, this is certainly not an exhaustive list of everything that we heard, but these are some of really those themes of what we were hearing kind of repeatedly, particularly from Half Moon Bay. First of all, support for improving frequency on Route 17 and on Route 294. Concern about removal of service to Seton Coastside Medical Center, which is something that we're hearing now during this round of outreach. Heard a lot about access to beaches, as Jessica mentioned. Obviously, that's a very unique element for your community. And we heard a lot about, or heard many requests for us to think really creatively about how we could provide that first mile or last mile access to the beaches in your community. And support for the concept of an on-demand service, although folks had certainly questions about how it would work, and I'll be talking a little bit more about that later in the presentation. Sort of mixed responses and perspectives regarding service to College of San Mateo from the coast. Some folks thought it was really critical to provide. While others noted that it's, they had observed that it's, it's very underutilized and that removing it would ultimately speed up their commute from the coast over to the train or other destinations on the bay side of, of the county. And lastly, we, we often hear throughout the county requests for better amenities at bus stops and improved pedestrian access to our bus stops. And that's something we would love to continue partnering with Half Moon Bay to, to improve in the future. So diving into the recommended new network, just wanted to give a little background on how we created the network. So there were a lot of inputs that went into this work. We looked at the ridership and productivity of our routes. We also did an equity need analysis, which really helped us establish equity, what we're calling equity priority areas in San Mateo County. And these are areas where households are more likely to not have access to their own vehicle, so zero car households, households that are more likely to identify as a race or ethnicity other than white. And households where they're more likely to be of lower income or being paid lower wages. So those are really the three factors that went into our analysis of equity. And equity was ultimately one of four guiding principles that we really developed with our board and with staff at SAM Trans to really guide us in how we were going to allocate our resources in the new network. We also did market research. We also did market research, market analysis, and community engagement throughout the project. And we have three um sort of buckets of objectives for our recommended new network. Um, the first really being equity, so prioritizing our service to high-need communities. From routes that are underutilized or duplicative. We're also looking to find efficiencies where we can, so that we can do more um in certain areas in the county. So in some cases, we're consolidating routes or or making routes more direct and taking out some deviations. That are on our routes. And lastly, really focused on connections and connections at all times of day. So providing better service sometimes during those midday periods. Um, and more service to transit hubs and key job centers. Looking at the changes in Half Moon Bay. Um, I want to, I'm first going to talk about some of the changes that we really see as um service enhancements for the coast. Um, first, uh, we are proposing to um increase the frequency of service on the weekends on Route seventeen. And Route seventeen is sort of the um teal colored line on the map. It runs between um Half Moon Bay and Lindamar up in Pacifica. So that route runs every two hours right now on the weekends. Um, and we would propose to bring it up to hourly service, which will hopefully make it more usable um to people on the weekends. Two-hour service is pretty hard to use, um, which we heard a lot from, from folks on the coast. Um, we're also proposing more frequent midday service on Route two ninety four. Um, which is our route that connects um the Hillsdale area in San Mateo with Half Moon Bay. This route would also receive service once an hour um throughout the midday. Um, right now, there's some gaps in our service where it doesn't run um every hour. It's sometimes two hours between trips. So we would propose to bring that service up to every sixty minutes. Um, all day long. Um, we're also going to be really focused on providing better connections for transfers. Um, for folks who need to make their way further north to Daly City or Bart stations in North County. So we're going to be really focused on um those time transfers at the Lindamar Park and Ride. For folks who may be using Route seventeen and need to transfer to one of the routes that connects up to Bart. And we're also proposing um an on-demand pilot program um in Half Moon Bay. Um, and uh, this service is um a, a service that is operated. Um, with a kind of smaller sort of shuttle-sized vehicle. It um is a service where uh it's booked, it's bookable, I'm in real time. So doesn't have to be booked um days in advance. Um, it can be booked in real time by using an app or by making a phone call. Um, and it would pick people up anywhere within the zone and drop them off anywhere within the zone. Um, so it's not a, it's not a scheduled um bus route on a certain street. Um, it's a, a service that could be used to make a trip anywhere that starts and ends within. Um, the designated zone. And the service would be um provided using uh or just via a local fare. So you know, we have our two twenty-five cash local fare, two oh five um Clipper fare. And it wouldn't, um, it wouldn't change from that. It would just be a local fare price. And it would be offered between eight AM and five PM, seven days a week. And we're still sort of working out the boundaries of the zone. Um, but we're, what we're proposing is to sort of extend up to um Capistrano Road or Dennison Creek in the north. Um, at the north, northern boundary and Miramonte's Point Road, including Moon Ridge Apartments and Kenyatta Cove. Um, to the south. And um, of course, some of these enhancements do come with um some service, what we call service reallocations. So where can we find some efficiencies so that we can provide some different services? Um, and so what we're proposing on, on this side of the coin is um fewer deviations on Route seventeen. Um, which will help us save some resources and will also um provide a faster trip for people. Um, so we're proposing to remove um the Sunshine Valley Road deviation. Um, which I'm not sure if you can see my cursor, but I'm trying to kind of um put it over the Sunshine Valley Road area. Um, we're also proposing to remove um uh that deviation to Seton Coastide Medical Center. As well as service into Kenyatta Cove, but we would still serve um Highway one outside of Kenyatta Cove. And I do want to mention that school service would still be, be available on Sunshine Valley Road. So our Route eighteen um currently runs on Sunshine Valley Road and would still be available. We're also proposing to remove um the uh extension, a very limited service that's offered down to Pescadero. Um, very low ridership on this um, on this extension. And we know that we have our SAM Coast Service, which provides um an on-demand sort of. Although I believe it has to be booked twenty-four hours in advance at, at this point. Um, a, a service that could be uh that is available um in the Pescadero area to pick people up and take them places they need to go. From that rural area. And lastly, we are um proposing to remove um the deviation to College of San Mateo on Route two ninety four. Um, due to low ridership and really low usage of that um deviation, folks could still get up to CSM. Um, if they transferred to our Route two fifty at Hillsdale. As Jessica mentioned, we are collecting public input for um about another week, a little bit less than a week. Um, really encourage people to visit reimagine samtrans.com. Um, where you can review all of the recommended route changes and leave a comment for us. Um, and if you prefer, you can also call our SAM Trans customer service team. The number is um kind of down at the bottom of the slide, um one eight hundred six six zero four two eight seven. They are um well-versed in the recommended route changes and available to help um folks uh log their comments for us. And then we're also holding a public hearing tomorrow at our SAM Trans Board Meeting at two o'clock. If folks want to participate in that on Zoom. And we already held um our four virtual public meetings of this round. Um, our COSEI meeting was last Thursday. Um, we're working on getting all of the recordings up. They're not quite up yet, but they will be up um on our project website soon. In case anyone wants to re-watch that meeting. Um, and again, here's the information about our Board of Directors meeting tomorrow at two o'clock. And the last thing I want to say is just that um we are looking forward to a phased implementation. Um, this is not, these are not changes that are going to happen overnight. Um, they will uh start happening next summer in August twenty twenty-two. And then um we're looking to additional phases in January twenty twenty-three and beyond. Um, we are actively recruiting and training additional bus operators. Many of these new services um that we want to provide throughout the county will require us to actually grow. Our bus operator workforce. Um, so we are actively recruiting um for that position. Um, if anyone in Half Moon Bay knows anyone or would like to consider becoming a SAM Trans bus operator, we would love to hire locally within our county. But overall, we are um very focused on maintaining reliability throughout the implementation of these changes. And avoiding um canceled trips or any issues um with our service. So with that, um, I will go ahead and stop sharing and happy to take any comments or questions.
Any comments or questions from council members? Thank you for the presentation, Millie. It's terrific, very informative. Um, Councilmember Minnis?
Yes, uh, thank you for the presentation. I have a question about the pilot program uh that on-demand program that you have. When does it start and how you advertising that?
Um, sure, so um, we uh have not set a date for when it would start yet. Um, it like, this likely um would be more of a twenty twenty-three um type of endeavor for us. Um, we need to um do a number of things to introduce this. It's, it's a brand-new service type for us. So we will need to do a number of things to get, to get um ready to launch that. Um, so no date has been set, um, but we would love to work with the city, absolutely. I think the city will be a key partner for us in getting the word out about how to use this type of service, since many people may not be familiar. Um, with it. So more to come on marketing and um I think communications of the project or of the, the uh service. Um, as we get closer.
I am uh, I am familiar with this uh, with this program. Actually, this program was a, a contract. That it was done of SAM Trans and uh in Pescadero with Puente. Uh, that it was used pretty much on demand uh for farm workers that live outside of the area. Uh, to come into the, into Puente uh to the Zero Pescadero or to Half Moon Bay, to a COSI clinic, uh dental clinics. Or even as far as uh the consulate uh or the hospital in San Mateo. So I think this is a program that we need right now. Uh, I know it's uh, you're talking about twenty twenty-three. But it's uh, like I say, I am familiar with the benefit of this program. I know many people that benefited from this program uh when it was implemented in uh the South Coast. And I think uh here our community will be a great benefit uh to a lot of members of our community, especially. You know, uh, uh, the community lives out of Moon Ridge. Uh, maybe it could expand a little bit further down to Purissima. Or we have one of the biggest farms, you know, the Juicy Farms, uh, to be able to have a access to transportation into Half Moon Bay. Uh, for various things.
Hey, thank you.
Councilmember, ready?
Yeah, I'm, I'm concerned about reducing service to Kenyatta Cove. Can you explain the rationale behind that? Are you expecting to make it up with on-demand or what? I mean, it seems like those remote areas like Moon Ridge and Kenyatta Cove ought to have regular service and good service. Um, you know, even if ridership during various periods is low. I mean, that's why you have public transport, why you have governments. Sometimes you do things just because, even if you have to subsidize it somewhat. So I'm a little concerned about reduced service at Kenyatta Cove and wondering if that affects Moon Ridge as well.
Um, so I can tell you that our proposal um right now is to remove um the fixed route. Um, Route seventeen from Kenyatta Cove. Um, and over the years, it's, it's been an interesting um. Back and forth sort of with Kenyatta Cove. We've been in, we've been out, um based on just preferences, I think, of, of residents over the years. Um, but so the, the proposal is to, to pull the seventeen out of Kenyatta Cove. Um, continue the seventeen up um to Moon Ridge Apartments on Miramonte's Point Road. Um, and to include both of those residential areas in the on-demand zone. So Kenyatta Cove would be part of the on-demand zone. Um, but again, we are um, we would welcome community members um to make their voices heard. If they would like us to stay um in Kenyatta Cove, we would absolutely welcome folks to, to please let us know.
Did you have a, a meeting specifically, you know, in those areas in Moon Ridge and in Kenyatta Cove to ascertain interest?
So um, for Kenyatta Cove, what we've done is we've made sure that they had a bus sign. You may have noticed that we have temporary signs up all over the county. Uh, particularly, we actually have very heavily made sure they were on the coast. So their sign, their post actually has a sign right now that says this stop. Be recommended for removal to make sure that anyone who's actually using the stop. And again, we, we're, these um determinations are based on very, very low ridership. This is not heavily-used bus stop. And so we have this sign up. We also mailed information to the HOA. We've also put stuff in the print newspaper for Half Moon Bay, done a lot of advertising here. And so again, this, i- in order to have the benefits and the, the faster service on the seventeen. We do have to find places to find service hours. So our feeling was we put, you know, giving Kenyatta Cove residents a bunch of information, really made sure onsite they have signage. Talking about the change and um that then allowed us to make these other changes uh in the area. And so it's, it's one of many of the kind of very low ridership areas where we're trying to pick up service hours.
But did you actually have meetings onsite at, at Kenyatta Cove and Moon Ridge to hear from us all?
We did not have meetings onsite. Uh, we are, we've been trying to be all over the county. So we're trying to do this through, you know, extra special hand of making sure they have the right information there. Uh, advertising all of our information. And I believe, Millie, you said Moon Ridge is still within, is Moon Ridge still? Moon Ridge is still on the seventeen and both would be in the on-demand zone. And uh, I have in the past had meetings with Kenyatta Cove where they asked us to leave. So um, again, it is some, does what someone seemed to shift with who is in charge of the HOA at the time.
So would it been the management that asked you to leave or actually the citizens came to you and said, don't give us service?
It was residents. That was several, that was admittedly several years ago. So for this round of outreach, we made sure they had the signage. We mailed them information and we have been heavily otherwise advertising in the Half Moon Bay area. And again.
What is, what is Reimagine San Mateo doing about building ridership? Not just assessing service levels and reconfiguring, but are you actually working on building ridership?
Yeah, obviously, the landscape has changed dramatically with COVID. Uh, so our projections, you know, no one knows who's going back to the office. But what we're really doing is putting our resources in the places we saw most heavily used during the pandemic. Essentially doubling down on those who need our service the most, those who have no option but the car. So you'll see around the county, we've really tried to create better service for our existing riders to get them to ride more. And uh, make it more reliable, again, reflecting that community feedback with more frequency on the coast. New weekend service in different areas. So we're taking all the feedback we got from our riders and I just also want to clarify, any ridership we talk about, we're talking pre-pandemic. No one is getting dinged for not riding during the pandemic. Um, but that's it, you know, it's kind of a fundamental philosophy of transit ridership. Try to put as much service as you can where people are most likely to ride it. And those are the demographics of those who likely don't have a car, members of racial and ethnic minority groups, low income. So you'll see a ton of service there and then you'll see a lot of new service to uh business centers, uh, the community colleges. You know, for Half Moon Bay in particular, we're speeding your travel up to Pacifica, which speeds your travel up to Bart. We're speeding up both of those travel, creating more weekend service. So really trying to follow what we know our riders want the most.
Yeah, and I have to admit, I'm disappointed about the, the CSM service decision. Um, you know, a lot of, well, CSM serves, you know, all demographics. Many different age groups, but you know, I have a son who's in a younger age group. Who many of them, you know, do not drive and have no interest in driving, you know. And we want, you know, people to be able to access education, you know. If you restrict access to education through transportation or whatever, um, you know. That, that's a problem as far as I'm concerned. So certainly, that seems to me, access to the community college facilities. You know, should remain a priority. Um, anyway, that's just, that's my two cents. I, I hate to see us, you know, curtail rather than expand. Uh, even if it's requires some level of, of public subsidy. I think ridership to CSM is, is really important for, for the coast side. I know you, you have statistics that may demonstrate otherwise, but you know, I'm not happy about it. So I just wanted to let you know.
I totally appreciate that. You know, we gave you the presentation for the coast. Uh, if you'd seen, we, we, we try to keep these as not, to not be here for two hours. Uh, but we actually have multiple places where we're increasing service to CSM. And this was one of those trade-offs. Um, for the riders, for the Half Moon Bay riders who aren't going to CSM. For the riders, for the Half Moon Bay riders who aren't going to CSM, that deviation is painful. And so and it adds time to their trip. So we went with the greater good for Half Moon Bay. Let's get as many people over the hill as quickly as possible and then create good connections for the CSM students to take a second seat up to CSM. Very much hear that, uh, all of these things are hard. We never like taking service from someone, but we're hoping to kind of create the right balance for the different needs for Half Moon Bay.
Understand, tough decisions have to be made. Seems to me, though, that going to Hillsdale and then going to CSM from Hillsdale is like, my son did that, depending on his class times and everything, you know, it's like, especially if it's raining. It seems to me that Alameda de Las Pulgas, you know, connection might be a little more convenient for people. But anyway, yeah, I I understand your situation and, you know, the the Solomon-like decisions you must make. Thank you for making them.
Councilmember Penrose.
Yes, thank you for the presentation. I appreciate it. I like the idea of the pilot program. It makes me a little nervous. I don't see how it's, how something like that can work, but if it works, it's fabulous. I guess you guys are just as curious about how it's gonna work. My question is, over the past couple of years, while you've been working on altering your service to the coast and to other places in the county, there has been a lot of talk in the, on the coast about why can't we get a direct service, express service to the BART from Half Moon Bay? Having to change buses, even if it's a better connection, is still a long trip. And it's very discouraging. I certainly am not doing it. I've tried it a couple of times and it, it was disastrous. I'd much rather drive and take a chance on finding street parking if BART station parking isn't available. But I'm wondering why you made the decision not to do a express bus?
Millie, are you able to?
Yeah, sorry, I apologize. I hope everyone can hear me. My Wi-Fi is a little bit unstable. I'm getting a connection unstable notification. But I think I heard the gist of the the question. And I think right now it's it's simply a matter of resources. As Jessica was talking about, making some really hard decisions about where we can prioritize and put our resources. And right now, we are going to really emphasize that timed transfer connection at Lindemar and give that a shot and see if folks respond to that and tell us that that's working reasonably well. And and that's where we're planning to really put our our best efforts in the near term.
Yeah, I think that, um, I I can't imagine that that's gonna make much of a difference. It seems to me that it's like the chicken and the egg. Unless you offer transit from the town center of Half Moon Bay to the BART station, you're not gonna get people using it. And people don't go from Half Moon Bay to Pacifica. There's no reason to do that. But I mean, there are a few, but there aren't a lot of people that do that. Most people that want to take that route want to go straight to the BART so that they can get into the city or other places in the county. And so I'm, um, I'm sorry about that.
Thank you, Councilmember Penrose. Um, you have a couple of questions. Well, a lot of your decisions are based on ridership, right? I mean, you're a business, so, um, it sounds like you made a number of decisions based on ridership. So first, I'm glad that you mentioned that decision to not have any service to the Cove was based on ridership patterns pre-COVID. I don't know if a lot of people know that. So I think that's a great idea to make that known, because a lot of people just stopped doing public transportation for fear of being in, uh, you know, enclosed spaces with other folks. So, um, if that in fact is the case, I think you should just maybe make that clear on that particular decision. Secondly, um, how about, you know, I think you are an interesting experimental stage and taking in a lot of ideas. How about a pilot express service to BART and just see what kind of ridership you get? Because I think you'd get a lot of folks interested. And we would certainly help, um, publicize that. And I think it would be an ex, it would serve a lot of folks on the coast side. So it's not just Half Moon Bay, you know, it's all, see, it's not just our 15,000 people. It's like 35,000 folks who you're serving. And I think we will be entering a space where businesses might start having more people, you know, at least on a hybrid basis, coming in to the office. We don't know yet. But, um, I would encourage working with us maybe on a pilot. So something where you don't have to invest too heavily. Uh, and let's see how that goes. And, you know, try it on a trial basis and see what happens. Nothing like a pilot to really assess interest and ridership. I think you'd get some pretty full buses. So, um, so yeah, would you be willing to consider that? Or at least put that on your radar screen and get back to us on that?
So I think we can certainly consider it. And we're open to all ideas. I just, I do have to be, I want to make sure expectations are, we're all on the same page about setting expectations, because we are at a, we're, we're at a historic low, at least in recent history, on our bus operator numbers. We have a very senior, um, work, uh, workforce for our bus operators. Um, and we are really trying to recruit the next generation of bus operators, but it is no easy task. I'm sure people have seen the news. The post office is recruiting bus, um, you know, postal workers, school bus drivers are at a low. This is not an easy task. So we, um, although we have, as planners, we have this wonderful vision for what we want the future of Sam Trans to be, we cannot do it without a robust workforce of bus operators. So we're working as hard as we can to attract, um, a a large new class of of bus operators. But that's absolutely essential. So we are, um, resource constrained in this very critical resource at the moment. But I I will tell you that we are, we are hearing you, we're open to different pilot programs, we're open to different ideas. But I have to be the bearer of bad news a little bit in terms of just the resources that Sam Trans has available.
I get that. And, you know, from our end, we can help gauge interest. And if it's a pilot, perhaps subsidize some of the fares at first to get people interested to try it out. You know, we we can brainstorm some ideas to try and get interest up there. And I don't know if commute.org offers, uh, last mile services with their shuttles, but they probably also have a driver recruitment issue, I guess, would be at this point. So, um, you know, I know you partner with them. So anyway, um, but just let us know what it might take for us to make the case, to help make the case. We don't expect you to make the case on our behalf, but we can help, uh, you know, gauge interest on our side. One last question regarding amenities at bus stops. We have a particular bus stop in our Safeway Shopping Center, and I think there's a bench there. I think we're interested in trying to get a rain shelter, which I don't think has ever been constructed yet. Am I correct on that?
Yes, here, Mayor Brownstone, maybe I can jump in. You're correct on that. We actually reached out to Sam Trans to see how we can facilitate that, uh, shelter, that location. Unfortunately, in order to do that, we needed to do some major improvements to the the concrete pad that it sits on. So at this point, we have not been able to do that. But Sam Trans was able to come in quickly and put in a bench and a trash receptacle to assist that, uh, that location. So that was the, that was what we were able to achieve. And as the Straw Farm Village Shopping Center does go through its changes, that's definitely something that we'll look to consider adding and working with the property owners to do soon.
Yeah, that'd be great, because it's pretty hard to juggle an umbrella and shopping bags, no matter how you look at it. So, uh, a lot of folks who don't have cars are very dependent on that. Okay, so I'm just wondering how that works. That's all the questions I have. Any other questions from council members before I go? Thanks for, um, sitting under the, um, spotlights for us here. And, uh, it's tough, I get it. And, um, but let's keep trying partnering together. We really appreciate you coming out here and, uh, you know, just being candid with the situation. And we're together on that future partnerships and projects together, I hope. So, thank you.
And we, yes, I say, we really appreciate working with your staff. They've been really great to work with through this process.
Oh, thank you for saying that. Yeah, they are great. Appreciate that. Thank you. All right.
Okay, thanks for having us.
All right, thank you. Okay, um, I have no special announcements to make. Catherine, is there a report out from closed sessions?
No, the council, the council's not met in a session, the last meeting, nothing to report out.
Great. Let's see, how about we'll move on to some city manager updates to council.
Hey, Mr. Mayor. I'll let Matthew facilitate. We have five items. Most of them are fairly quick because they're just announcements of upcoming events. So Matthew, why don't you queue it up and kick it off with just a recap of how the event at Magnolia Park went?
Thanks, Bob. And, um, actually, Jessica, if you see Scott in the audience, if you could bring him in, he's actually gonna do the, um, presentation. I'm not sure I actually see him there, though.
He's here as a panelist.
Oh, there you are. Thank you. So Scott will kick it off, and then we'll have several announcements of community updates.
Thanks, Matthew, Mr. Mayor, and members of the City Council, and Scott Phillips. And I'll give a brief update on the recent happenings at Magnolia Park. Now, Magnolia Park is a city-owned parcel, undeveloped between Magnolia and Seymour, west of Highway 1. And Magnolia Park was identified as a priority for improvements within our comprehensive parks master plan. Now, the Parks Master Plan also identified Magnolia Park as a potential site for a community garden. So that was one item that was noted in the Parks Master Plan. Now, that said, uh, the park itself does need to be master planned before park improvements can take place. Now, community outreach is well underway. As mentioned, we had a outreach meeting on October 23rd, and it was held onsite. We had approximately 70 people attend the meeting onsite. Lots of positive input and creative ideas were mentioned and provided. And we were blessed with great weather that day, not the case the, the Sunday after. So lucked out there. Now, another thing that we've done, uh, let's see, about a week before the event at Magnolia Park, we launched our survey, which is still live on our website, and that's what's shown here. And that'll be up until November 30th. So I encourage everyone to take a look at that. And, uh, you know, the more input, the better. And, um, on this same slide, we have other information about Magnolia Park, including the three concepts. So you all are welcome to take a look at those and provide, you know, contact me at any time for any thoughts or ideas. This is the time where we're taking in as much, you know, information, thoughts, or ideas from the community that we possibly can on improvements to Magnolia Park. Now, next steps, December 8th, we, uh, the Parks and Rec meeting, we have Magnolia Park scheduled, and we intend to present the concepts to the Parks and Rec Commissioners and solicit more feedback on thoughts or ideas on Magnolia Park. Eventually, a refined park plan will be presented to the City Council once we've gone through this sort of refinement of evaluating all the, all the feedback that we're receiving right now. So I'm, as a project manager, I'm happy to, if you have any questions or if you want to reach out to me later on, happy to talk about Magnolia Park. Thank you.
Thank you, Scott. Really appreciate it.
And here's a slide of the the event itself, so.
Okay, thank you, Scott. Scott is doing a great job managing this project, and we're really, just really encouraged by all the community feedback that we've gotten. A lot of excitement brewing around what would be the first new park in Half Moon Bay in many, many years. So we, we appreciate council support as we move this forward. I'll make the next, uh, announcement, um, which will begin a series of of community events that we're announcing tonight. This is a plug for Make It Main Street, which will be held this Thursday. This is the last Make It Main Street event in 2021. This is a new event that was, um, kind of developed in collaboration with many community groups and, uh, most importantly, the organizers of our local farmer's market. And it's a downtown event on Thursday, the first Thursday of every month. And the intent is to bring locals together to socialize and to patronize our local businesses. And it's always themed around makers. So there's a Makers Fair that takes place on Kelly Avenue next to City Hall, where you can buy locally crafted goods. There's, uh, usually a speaker space and other music at MacDutra Plaza across the street. There are typically musicians up and down the street and lots of really great supportive events. This Thursday, uh, it it's from 3:00 to 7:00, although we expect it'll kick off a little bit earlier than normal just because it's gonna get dark earlier than it has at previous events. If you want more information, please go to makeitmainstreethmb.org, and there's information about all the different events that'll be happening this Thursday. Next slide, please. I did want to point out, one of the great components of Make It Main Street is movies on Main Street. And our local Odd Fellows generously host a different movie every month, which is shown usually several times, and these movies tend to have a local connection and are are really inspirational and and great opportunities to learn. This month's movie, tied to the theme of this being Indigenous Peoples' History Month, is called Gather. And it's a documentary about Native American foodways and some reconnection within the United States and some movements to reconnect with Native American foods that existed prior to colonization and some of the changes and atrocities that happened in the the 1800s. This particular film features several groups from Northern California as well, so there is a local connection. This will be shown twice this Thursday night at the Odd Fellows Hall on Main Street, once at 5:00 PM and once at 6:30 PM. And after each showing, there's typically a panel that'll take place at MacDutra Plaza with the director, producer, people involved in making the film. So please be sure to check that out. Uh, next slide, please. And I'll pass it over to Veronica Vostinek, who has our next announcement.
Great, thanks, Matthew. Good evening, Mayor, City Council, and the public. I'm just here to give you another reminder about our Fall Community Recycling Day, which is coming up this Saturday, November 6th at 9:00 AM. Um, so this, this event, which is sponsored by Republic Services, a big thank you to them for providing events like this to the community. It'll be at Smithfield Parking Lot, which is at the end of Wave Crest Road. It is open and all services are free for Half Moon Bay residents. There will be compost pickup, document shredding, and e-waste recycling. This time, a little bit differently from the last couple of events, we will have a vendor onsite for e-waste recycling that will take any of the items out of your trunk and dispose of them. So no need to get out of your car for this event if you're doing e-waste. There's some more information, both on this slide and on our website at the bottom, hmbcity.com/recyclingday. And if you have any questions, you can always reach out to Republic Services. We're really excited to bring this to the community again. It's really popular. We're really excited to bring this to the community again. It's really popular. And we hope we'll see you there. And that is it for, for me. I'm going to pass it over to Brittany.
Thank you, Veronica. Good evening, Mr. Mayor and council members. My name is Brittany Coslino. And I'm here to give you a brief reminder about our upcoming housing work session next Tuesday, November 9th, with a special start time of 5:00 PM. And next slide, thank you. So this will be a joint work session with the City Council and the Planning Commission with a two-part agenda. The first half of the meeting will be about housing opportunity sites. And the second half will be about options for updating our Measure D ordinance. There will be time for public comment and City Council and Planning Commission discussion for each topic. And a dinner break will be provided about midway through the agenda, so we can all stay properly fueled. A simultaneous translation will also be available. And this work session is intended to inform the city's upcoming housing element update, as well as to identify priorities for housing sites and our Measure D ordinance update. So we look forward to seeing you all there. Thank you.
Oh, question.
Question, sorry. Council member, minutes.
Do we have a flyer, something we can actually be, share with the community, maybe your social media, the city's webpage? Is there anything we can share with the community? Where can we get it?
Yeah, for the housing work session?
Yes.
Yeah, we have put together a little graphic like you saw on the last slide and a blurb that has been going out in E-News. I'd be happy to put that onto a flyer form for you.
Do we have any of that in Spanish?
Yes, it is translated in Spanish in E-News.
Thank you.
It's also on the main, currently on the main banner on the city's homepage right now.
How about for folks who might not, you know, go to the website or be subscribers to community news?
We will be sending out a notification to some of our specialized mailing lists tomorrow, including the folks who participated in the 2018 community conversations on housing. And I think flyers are definitely doable as well.
Could I pick up some flyers tomorrow by any chance, or Thursday? Maybe I'll go to the City Hall and pick up some flyers.
Yeah, I can have them tomorrow.
Thank you.
All right. Thanks, Brittany. Thanks for the question. That's the number of minutes.
Victor, are you there? No, Victor?
Hold on one sec. He's coming over.
Hi, everyone. Sorry about that slide delay.
No worries.
All right, I'm on now. All right. Well, good evening. I'm happy to be here tonight to announce that there will be a community forum to learn more about the Coast House Shelter on Wednesday, November 17th, from 6:00 PM to 7:30 PM. The forum will be hosted by Life Moves, which is a shelter operator, the County of San Mateo, and the city. And will be moderated by the Peninsula Conflict Resolution Center. And city staff will be conducting outreach. Already has been conducted outreach and will continue conducting outreach up until the date through our email list, weekly newsletters, and social media sites, including Nextdoor. And the Zoom link is, information isn't available quite yet, but we'll be sure to include that in our outreach as soon as it is. And we invite anyone and everyone to attend and learn more about the Coast House Shelter.
Will it be held at Coast House, or is it strictly on Zoom?
Strictly on Zoom.
Thanks.
And is that the last announcement? Actually, go ahead, go ahead, Jessica, and then I'll add one more at the end. Or have we lost Jessica now?
No, I'm here. I, I don't believe this slide was supposed to be in the presentation.
Well, I just wanted to throw one more in, Mr. Mayor and members of council, since we're making announcements of upcoming events and it sounds like it's a busy two weeks. We would be remiss if we also, and there's a flyer for this event as well, did not announce the grand opening of the Workforce Development Center. Abundant Grace is very excited to have their grand opening. It's this Saturday, November 6th. It's from 12:00 to 3:00, so it's kind of an open house format. Come by at any time, but they will have an actual ribbon cutting to officially open the new center at 1:00. So we also encourage folks to attend that event.
If I could chime in on another event that's coming up tomorrow. The Truth Act Forum, which is required by state law, is going to be taking place 6:00 to 8:00 PM. You can zoom in. The, the Truth Act is going to present what, the number of local residents who have been transferred from the sheriff's office to ICE. The, that information is required to be disclosed. It's going to be available to everybody. All the supervisors, the county supervisors are going to be present. Be a chance for the public to ask questions about these transfers. And in the interest of transparency, it's really important that we be aware of how many people have been transferred from the county jail to ICE. San Mateo County unfortunately leads all other counties in this realm. And it's, it's really something that we have to be aware of. And if we can do anything about it, we should. Thank you.
Can you tell us how to get to that meeting?
If you, if you Google Truth Act Forum, you can find out the link. You have to fill out your name and the city you're coming from in order to get the link, but it's no big deal.
I'll also add, when you Google it, make sure you put San Mateo County, because this is happening in counties across the state.
Right.
Yeah.
Council member, Robert. Any other announcements, announcements of interest? I think we've covered.
I think that's enough. That's a lot.
Appreciate. See, matter, and this is what I was going to mention that earlier about ribbon cutting ceremony. So thank you. Appreciate that. Okay. Now, move on to the consent calendar. And I'm going to recommend a 10-minute break. So I move that we adopt. Consent calendar. I'll make motion to adopt the consent calendar, item 1A, waiving reading resolutions and ordinances. Item 1B, top of resolution, supporting the authorization for the middle of an application for the 2021 Measure A and Measure W Highway Program, funding for the Highway One Safety and Operational Improvement Project North. Item 1C, accept treasurer's report for the quarter ending September 30th, 2021. Item 1D, accept the quarterly financial report for the first quarter of fiscal year 2021. Authorize the Administrative Services Director to amend the FY 2022 operating and capital expenditure budgets by adding a total of $242,336. And item 1E, reratification of a resolution to continue holding public meetings remotely. Can I go second?
Second.
And please have a roll call.
Council member Jimenez?
Yes.
Council member Penrose?
Yes.
Council member Rarback?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Reddick?
Yes.
Mayor Brownstone?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Great. And how about if we take a break till, 10-minute break till 8:30? All right. Back in 10 minutes. Thanks. Agendized items. First item being item 2A, a resolution of necessity authorizing eminent domain action to acquire real property owned by Claudia Goulash, Martha Stagner, and Harriet Lewis. For members of the public, who might be new to our process, will first entertain a staff report and receive that from staff. We will then have an opportunity for council members to ask any clarifying questions. And then we will open it up for the public comment section. And listen to public comments. And then we'll come back to council members for deliberations. So why don't we begin with staff reports?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, council members of the community. I've presented a staff report this evening. I've asked Colleen to run my slide. So, Colleen, if you can go ahead. Great, thank you. So as, as was mentioned, this item is a resolution of necessity authorizing use of eminent domain to acquire a parcel in the west of railroad plan development area. Next slide, please. So this is a map showing the west of railroad plan development or PD area. That's outlined in red. The parcel at issue here is sort of right in the, in the center of the PD area. The staff report goes into a lot of detail about this area. I won't go into all of that, but just to note that this, this area is undeveloped. There are no roads or utilities. The site at issue, as with nearly all of the, all of the parcels are, is vacant. Not served by, by utilities. The staff report provides, you know, quite a, quite a history of the west railroad area. And I wanted to, you know, highlight a few things. This area has long been prioritized for public acquisition. In the city's ladies plans, going back to 1985, it's been designated for parks and recreation as a ladies designation, in addition to the PD, the PD designation, the plan development designation. So despite this, you know, longstanding goal of public acquisition, it's only recently been that funding has become available. And that's been through law retirement funds that the city obtained earlier this year in regards to the Pacific Ridge Alonzo Project. So that, so the council's heard about these funds before. But just as a reminder, that project, the Pacific Ridge project, was challenged in court. And as part of the settlement, the developer had to pay $2.6 million in law retirement funds that would be held by a bank until a certain time that they would be released to the city. And the city has a legal obligation to use those funds to retire lots in, in the city. So this is a targeted acquisition here. And it's part of a larger program to, you know, acquire and retire lots. And that program includes, you know, not only this potential eminent domain action, but also the city is negotiating other transactions with other property owners. And the staff report describes the, you know, those efforts in terms of negotiations with property owners and letters of interest that have gone out to, to property owners where there is active negotiation. All right, so next slide. All right, so this slide outlines the, the need for the property and the, and how it implements the project in multiple ways, by protecting the habitat and scenic values, providing for, bring an area for green infrastructure to control drainage, manage coastal hazards and erosion, to manage retreat of the coastal trail, which will eventually need to be moved eastward, and mitigate traffic impacts of the law retirement program that I just described. And then finally, to allow for recreational opportunities in the west of railroad PD area. Next slide. So for this particular piece of property, the city has provided notice of decision to appraise. It's gone through all the steps necessary to make an acquisition in a pursuit of eminent domain as, you know, the, as a last resort. The properties didn't respond to the notice. The city retained an appraiser to appraise the property. That appraisal came in at $15,000. That was based on similar transactions of comparable sales in that west, in the west of railroad PD area. And the city offered the full appraisal value to the property owners who have not responded to that offer, but I do want to note that the city remains open to negotiate a purchase from those, from those owners short of any, you know, trial or settlement of the litigation. Next slide. All right, so the resolution of necessity is a necessary precursor to filing eminent domain and. All right, so the resolution of necessity is a necessary precursor to filing eminent domain, and there are a certain number of findings that need to be, that need to be made and are, and are laid out. And I'm just gonna recite those for the record here. One, the public consent necessity required the project. Two, the projects planned and located in the, the manner that will be most compatible with the greatest public good and least private injury. The projects ought to be acquired as necessary for the project. And finally, that the offer required by the government code has been made to the owners of record. And that's the offer that I, that I just described last, the last slide. Finally, the value of the property is not at issue before the, the council. That would be, that, that will be determined, you know, during the, the, the eminent domain proceeding by trial or by settlement. Next slide. All right, so at this point, the council can ask any clarifying questions to me and then open it up for public hearing. And Mr. Mayor, I think you may be muted.
Thank you. Sorry about that. I don't see any hands raised for councilors for clarifying questions. Any, let's open it up for public comment.
I don't have any hands raised, Mayor.
Thank you. We'll now close public comments. I will now open up for city council deliberations. Any thoughts, any ads? Would anyone like to make a motion?
Move your staff.
If I could just interrupt the next, Colleen could just advance the next slide. We have the, the motion on the slide.
Thank you.
Okay, I move that we adopt by a four to five vote, a resolution authorizing an eminent domain action to acquire the real property owned by Claudia Goulash as the heir to Barbara Jimenez, Martha Stagner, and Harriet Lewis, San Mateo County APN zero five six dash one two eight dash zero seven zero, located in the west of railroad PV area. Further authorize the city attorney to deposit the amount of probable compensation in the amount of fifteen thousand dollars.
So I think council member Penrose, we have a second, council member Rarback, can we have a roll call, please?
Councilmember Jimenez?
Yes.
Councilmember Penrose?
Yes.
Councilmember Rarback?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Reddick?
Yes.
Mayor Brownstone?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you, everyone. We'll now move on to three A, which is an informational update on the twenty twenty census. And we will have a staff report.
Evening, everyone. I'll go ahead and share my screen. All right. Can everyone see this?
Yes, we can.
Perfect. Well, good evening again, Mayor Brownstone and members of the council. I'm Victor Adon, managing analyst with the city manager's office, and I'm happy to be here tonight to provide you with an informational update on the twenty twenty census. And I'll start by providing a bit of background on what exactly the decennial census is. The United States government is required by the constitution to count all residents of the United States every ten years. That includes citizens and non-citizens alike. The decennial census is sent to all households, and the information collected is used to ensure that everyone is represented equally at the local, state, and national levels, determine how federal funds are allocated to state and local governments. And census data is used by local governments, businesses, developers, transportation planners, and community organizations to make many important decisions that affect our communities. And if you completed the census in or around April of twenty twenty, and I hope everyone did, you may recall that the census is a relatively short survey that only asks a few questions that are mostly demographic, including the number of people living in the household on census day or whenever you completed the census, the type of household and ownership or rental status. And again, demographic information like the race, age, and sex of each person living in the household. In contrast to the decennial census, the American Community Survey, or ACS, is a much more detailed yearly survey that is only sent to approximately three point five million households nationwide. And as I mentioned, it is a longer, much more detailed survey that asks questions about housing, such as number of bedrooms in a house, computer and internet usage, occupancy status, rental or ownership status, information about the home in general. It asks about social aspects of the individuals living in the household, such as ancestry, ancestry, citizenship status, educational attainment, marital status or history, fertility information, school enrollment, enrollment, et cetera. As about economic aspects of the individuals living in the households, such as employment status, income, occupation, industry, health insurance, et cetera. And it also asks the same demographic questions that the census does, but in more detail about the age, sex, race of individuals living there, as well as information about individuals living in group quarter facilities. Now, because the ACS is a survey of a relatively small sample size compared to the entire population of the United States, and it's spread throughout the entire United States, the information may not always be as accurate or pertinent to Hafen Bay. However, it can be the best available data between census years and thus is relied upon for planning purposes. Twenty nineteen is the latest year of data that we have at ACS. However, the Census Bureau lists on their website that preliminary ACS data for twenty twenty should be available no later than November thirtieth this year, so hopefully we can come back with a future update with twenty twenty ACS information. And as I mentioned, cities do utilize census data, and, and we certainly do in the city. Census data is used to inform many facets of city planning and operations, including districting and elections, planning and processes, budget planning and development, and grant writing, emergency response and planning and management, streets and facilities maintenance and management helps us to understand infrastructure demand, capacity when addressing housing needs, specifically population counts, housing counts, and the number of persons per household. Data is used in calculating the amount of measured certificates that are available to allow new dwelling units to move forward in the permitting process each year, which I think is the next item tonight. Helps in determining population demands on water, sewer, and road capacities at future points in time. Helps us analyzing the impacts of different types of residential, non-residential development on public infrastructure. And it helps us in supporting council priorities for affordable housing production, as well as probably a variety of other things. So now moving into the actual numbers. The total population count for the twenty twenty census was eleven thousand, seven hundred ninety-five residents. And you can see here, we have accounts listed dating back to nineteen ninety, so for the last four census counts over the last thirty years. And we can see about four percent growth from twenty ten to twenty twenty. And the red number you see down here was the estimated population from the twenty nineteen ACS, which, you know, let us was somewhat significantly overstated by about eight percent. The ACS for twenty nineteen approximated that we had or would have about twelve thousand, eight hundred and thirty-four residents. As you can see, the actual number is only eleven thousand, seven hundred and eighty-five. Now, looking back over the last thirty years, we see the total population in the city grew significantly from nineteen ninety to two thousand, has remained relatively unchanged over the last twenty years from two thousand to twenty twenty. And I'll pause at each of these tables and charts in case there are any questions, or we can save questions for the end and go back and visit all the, all the slides. I know it's a lot of information. So we also wanted to look a bit more broadly at all the census tracks that cover the San Mateo County coast side from the southern county line north to the Devil's Slide Tunnel. And from twenty ten to twenty twenty, there was similar, if not slightly lower growth of three percent in total population compared to the city's four percent growth, which is not necessarily surprising, given similar geographical, environmental infrastructure and regulatory constraints on development in those areas. And so here we see census counts for all the census tracks that touch the coast dating back to two thousand and the percent difference between each of those census counts. And you'll see the city is actually split up by several different census tracks on the coast. And actually, the six one three five dot O two, which I listed as just Algonada, does touch the tiniest bit of Hafen Bay on the northern end in Miramar. And here we have the maps. So you'll see six one three six up here is mostly Montero, Moss Beach. Six one three two, oh, there's six one three five oh two, most of Algonado, Hafen Bay. Here's more Hafen Bay. And the interesting thing is, for the twenty twenty census, we have six one three seven oh one and six one three seven oh two. These are two different tracks, but for all census counts prior to twenty twenty, it was just one big six one three seven. So I guess for twenty twenty, the Census Bureau determined that there was enough a substantial enough population here in order to create a census tract. And six one three is, is a giant census tract that just covers the entire south coast of San Mateo County. As we also thought it would be interesting to look into data for the state and all nine area counties in comparison to Hafen Bay. So here we have census, census counts, total population counts from two thousand to twenty twenty, and the percent change between each of those counts for California at the top, then all, all nine area counties. And then below that, we have all nine area counties and Hafen Bay organized by the percentage of growth between twenty ten and twenty twenty. So we see Alameda and Contra Costa County had the largest amount of growth in the last ten years. San Mateo County is down here at six point four percent growth, Hafen Bay again at four percent. And then a couple of other counties. So interesting to see and compare San Mateo County and Hafen Bay versus some of the other counties and areas of the Bay Area. Now here, we're looking at population characteristics by race and ethnicity. So here we look back to nineteen ninety and note the percent, percentage change between each ten year period. And here we have the different races and the cities that were listed in the census. So from nineteen ninety to twenty ten, we saw an average decennial growth of about thirty-five percent for individuals identified as Hispanic or Latina, which is down at the bottom. But from twenty ten to twenty twenty, we saw some stagnation of growth or even a slight decline in that population. And just, just for comparison sake, the population of individuals that identify as Asian has seen a steady increase over the last thirty years. And has become a larger share of the population over the past ten years. And for this chart and for the next one that I'll show, I did want to note that the decennial census counts race and ethnicity, or race and Hispanic, Latina origin separately. So someone can identify as having Hispanic, Latina origin, but also then go on to mark white, Black Rock American, or Asian, et cetera, as their race. And so there is some overlap between those two. I listed Hispanic, Latina origin on this table to show the demographic changes all in one place. But if you try adding up the numbers between all the different races that are listed and individuals that identify as Hispanic, Latina origin, the numbers won't add up to the population totals. Same thing with the percentages. Also, to simplify this presentation, I only listed numbers for individuals that identified as one race only. But census data has options for individuals that identify as up to six different races. But those numbers really weren't significant enough to include in this presentation. That would have made it a lot longer, a lot more difficult to understand. It would have been a massive chart. And these charts have been put together simply to show overall population trends in, in very broad terms. And the last thing I want to note before moving on is you'll see this number here that's highlighted, the four hundred and forty-eight. The data for the two thousand census lists that there were four hundred and forty-eight residents that identified as Black or African American in Hafen Bay. And comparing that to nineteen ninety or twenty ten, we believe that there was a data entry error on behalf of the Census Bureau staff. The figure is actually closer to four to four or forty-eight individuals that identified as Black or African American for two thousand. And if that actually is the case, that would likely change the total stated population for two thousand, reduced by about four hundred individuals. And that would subsequently change the percentage, change the percentage decrease in population from two thousand to twenty ten, from four percent to about one percent change in population. So that is a pretty significant error, if it is an error on behalf of the Census Bureau. And it might be something that, that maybe we'll joust to the Census Bureau board to get some clarification. This table is similar to the last one, but shows racial and ethnic populations as an approximate percentage of the total population. So the overall numbers, again, might vary slightly if individuals that identify, identify as one or more race were included. Although, again, given the small numbers, it likely wouldn't make that big a difference. And what's interesting here, that in looking at census numbers nationwide, seems to be a trend. You see the number of individuals identify as white alone for twenty twenty has decreased as a total percentage of the population. That seems to be a trend for most states, most counties nationwide. As previously mentioned, because the ACS only surveys a relatively small portion of the population, it is subject to errors, which can be seen in all of the population estimates in this table. So here we have in yellow, the estimates from the twenty nineteen ACS, the twenty twenty census actual numbers, and the percentage by which the estimate was off compared to the actual numbers. So again, eight percent difference between the estimate for twenty nineteen and the twenty twenty actual, and even greater discrepancies across the board. So again, the ACS is helpful in between census years, because census is every ten years. But it can, it can be off sometimes. Now, moving on to housing and occupancy. From twenty ten to twenty twenty, the total number of housing units increased by almost ten percent with similar trends in the number of occupied units and vacant units that comprise the total. It is notable that from two thousand to twenty twenty, census data indicates an increase of seven hundred and nineteen housing units that shows a slight decrease in population over the same twenty year period. And this data suggests a reduction in persons per household and potentially an aging local population. And census data for age and housing occupancy has not been released yet. There was still a bit of limited information that's out from the twenty twenty census. But once that data is available, we will be studying it. So here we have the number, total number of housing units, looking back to two thousand, twenty ten and twenty twenty. We see increases in housing units, similar increases in occupied units and vacant units. And for the purposes of the census, the housing unit is considered occupied if a person is, if a person is living in it at the time of the census interview or when they're supposed to fill out the census. If they're only temporarily absent, like if on vacation, that is still considered an occupied unit. And conversely, housing unit is classified as vacant if no one is living in it on census day unless its occupant or occupants are only temporarily absent, such as away on vacation and the hospital for a short stay or on a business trip. Or on a business trip and will be returning. Um, and housing units temporarily occupied at the time of enumeration or filling out the census. Um, that are occupied entirely by individuals who have a usual residence elsewhere are also classified as vacant. And by this definition, short term vacation rentals not used as a primary re- primary residence. Uh, and second or vacation homes are considered vacant housing units. And the city's short term vacation rental data indicates that while there have been some whole house rentals, which would be classified as vacant. Uh, most vacant units are likely second homes in the city. Um, now for future uh twenty census twenty twenty data releases, um that will include uh population data uh by age and numerous household char- characteristics that we couldn't include today because they weren't available. And uh city staff will continue following up on that census data and reviewing census data for adjacent unincorporated San Mateo County census tracts on the coast, along with the city of Happen Bay. Uh, and staff will also compare city records and studies with the latest data. And in the near term, the city council's upcoming annual December confirmation of twenty twenty two measure allocations will use the census twenty twenty population as the new base for the next 10 years. And with that, I'd be happy to take any questions and go back to any of the of the charts that were shown.
Uh, Victor, I I believe that uh the census undercounts the actual population. Is that the case with twenty twenty data?
Um, not, not necessarily that I've found, um, especially considering the numbers are pretty consistent. One thing that that is must be taken into consideration for twenty twenty is there was some fear. Or potential fear and potential undercount issues um with uh prior um presidential administration in in office. Part of the rhetoric was going on and also the Census Bureau having their budget slashed. So that is possible. Um, I know that our county, I thought, did a pretty good job in trying to get the word out, uh, spread the message of how important the census is. Um, but ultimately, fear is is a very real um issue. Um, when it comes to the census.
So there there's no real uh understanding of what undercount, if any, there was. Is that correct?
That is my understanding so far. And I'm sure that that it might be studied further by the Census Bureau, uh, by county officials. Hopefully. Right now, this is very preliminary data that was released.
Thank you.
Sorry, let me unmute. Um, any other questions from council members? I have one question. If there's no other questions, um. So just to make sure I understood, Victor, in the last 20 years, we have seven, over seven hundred more units of housing. But no real population increase. Is that correct?
Yeah, in the last 20 years, um, population fluctuated probably about 4%, um, which in the city really isn't that big of a, an increase.
Right. Okay, Councilmember Jimenez.
Could uh go back one of the charts, uh, what is a, about what is the population that we actually uh lost in Happen Bay? Uh, if we combine all the losses of the people that moved out of Happen Bay. Is there like a chart that shows that?
It shows losses. You mean by? By race or ethnicity?
Changes. So the the change in population from two thousand ten to two thousand twenty. It shows uh is that what it shows? The negative fourteen percent of uh white alone uh and uh three percent, a negative three percent. Um, some other race alone and uh negative two percent and
Yeah, so the 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 biggest decrease I, that that this shows um from the Census Bureau website would be um, a significant decrease in individuals identified as white alone in the city. Um, now this, this number in twenty ten is significantly bigger than other years. Um, so if I had to guess, that might also be an error. Uh, again, it it's difficult when we're we're bound by what the numbers state on the Census Bureau website. We kind of have to go by that. Uh, so if that is correct, then yeah, that would be the biggest um loss the city saw uh from twenty, two thousand ten to twenty twenty. Um, followed by individuals who identify as some other race, um, or individuals who identify as Hispanic or Latino.
But but I will point out, the overall, the total population has still grown.
Yeah.
So there there's been decreases in certain areas of our population, but the overall population has grown um, since the previous census.
But is there like anywhere where it shows like the, maybe like the socioeconomic background of the people that had left uh Happen Bay? Like a decrease or no? There there's nothing that shows that?
Not, not that I found, um, with the data that's available right now.
Plus, in the last twenty years, the population has decreased from two thousand to twenty twenty. So yeah, there was an increase from two thousand ten to twenty twenty, but
But but remember that the two thousand numbers we actually believe are overstated because of what we believe is discrepancy in the Black or African American identifying population. If you back out four hundred or so folks, if that's a typo, then um there actually has been a slight increase year over year. Or census over census.
Yeah, yeah. Okay.
And then uh the other chart that shows uh the houses, uh, the units, the housing units. It shows that we have more vacant uh units?
Yeah, it shows that we have more vacant units. Um, just based off the data that we have, we believe that those the large majority of those might be second homes or vacation homes in the city, which are counted as vacant units if that, if the, that person or persons have a a primary residence somewhere else. So some of those might be short term rentals. Um, some of them might just be empty homes or homes that are listed on the market for sale. Um, but we, we believe that they're mainly uh second homes or vacation homes.
And that's simply based on the fact that uh we're in a very tight housing market for sales. And there is not a lot of sales inventory out there. So these are homes that are sitting vacant, but are not for sale.
I'm I'm just, you know, surprised about how many empty homes we have in uh in Happon Bay. That's a lot. That's a pretty large number.
Pretty sad, given the the housing crisis we're facing.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying. You know, that's what I'm thinking about.
Families. Um, I I do want to point out and remind you that this is just the first round of data released by the census. Uh, the next round or or future rounds will include age and demographic information. And hopefully that will, as as we start to really analyze that data against the the housing and the the population data, we'll be able to glean some more insights and and have a more robust discussion in the future. And start to understand what's changing with our population, uh, not just these very simple pieces of information, but more complex information.
So can I? Yeah, sorry, Councilmember Jimenez. Go ahead.
I am interested, you know, finding out about these vacant units, you know, uh. I mean, we could get more information on that. I mean, what are they? Would it be a possibility or no?
I I don't think we're going to have access to much detail on that. Um, because I I think it's something we will check in with the with the county and with the Census Bureau about. But my guess is it's it's a question, does anybody live here or no? Check or, you know. And and we're not going to have details. I I think we're going to have to do some other work to try to find out what what these vacant units represent. And how we can maybe reduce the number of vacant units here in Happen Bay.
So a vacant unit can be a vacation home. So I want to just say in a place like Happon Bay, actually, that number doesn't surprise me at all. Down in Carmel, literally half the houses are second, are vacation units. So people go to them on weekends or let their friends stay or whatever. Maybe some are, you know, short term rentals, but um, for a place that is popular as Happon Bay. It really doesn't surprise me that, you know, it's not like the units are abandoned, but
I I think also it's interesting to note the 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 increase between two thousand and two thousand ten versus two thousand and ten and two thousand twenty. Right. So it all, it, the vacant units more than doubled during that time period. And actually, the increase in the last 10 years is only eighteen units. Remember that the housing market was down, flat for about a four year span through two thousand twelve. And it was at the end of two thousand twelve that the housing market started to take off again. And this is indicative that less people were buying uh second homes or vacation homes or you know, during that time period, this last um eight years of growth, than they were during the the big growth spurt um, between two thousand and two thousand ten. So just kind of interesting to to look at that. But I I think uh Councilmember Jimenez makes a good point. Um, that number does jump out at you and it, whether you think it's relatively s- small or large, because we're a tourist town. It still is something to consider, given our challenges with providing affordable housing. It's it's, you know. It's something to note for sure.
I uh, I forgot where I read it from. Uh, there was something that I read that it was been since two thousand, since two thousand. The Happon Bay uh has not built any uh, any affordable housing. You know, or any affordable houses has been built in Happon Bay. So it was, I forgot what I read. Uh, it's been a while, uh, maybe few years back.
The the senior housing was built in, I believe, two thousand ten, two thousand twelve, that timeframe. So those would have been the most recent um large scale affordable units built in Happon Bay.
But not only, it was for thirty percent of our population, right? Or twenty percent of our population?
I'm not sure if I follow that.
No, what I'm saying is about, about affordable housing being built for a, for a community, you know, people that work at even Happon Bay. It was just something I read, like I say, no, it was a while back that I read it. It was just uh, these numbers kind of match what I read. Uh, so I've been, maybe I'm just thinking that loud, you know?
I I can, I, you know, we, I'm, Jill probably doesn't have it off the top of her head, but uh she's, she's listening to your question. And if she can gather that information by the housing study session next Tuesday, uh, we will provide that. Uh, you, I, as I hear your question, you're sim- you've heard, you you've heard um, when the last time we provided affordable housing, but your question seems to be what's, what is, what's accurate, what's the truth? And if we can, if we can provide year by year, how many affordable housing units have been built, we'll, we'll provide that data by next Tuesday.
Also, we can find out from our senior housing community what percentage um of those units. If they know, or you know, from coast side folks. Because I know what you're asking, Councilmember Jimenez, that when these units were built by Midpan or Mercy Housing, only a certain number of those units could be guaranteed to coast side members, but then it went into a um, what do you call it? You know, selection process, you know, random selection process for people. It's a lottery. So so it's like kind of two questions. So based on the lottery, how many people ended up who are local, right? Now, you know, every once in a while, you'll see a local thing that's more local or it'll say, oh, the waiting list is kind of opening up. And, you know, it's either word of mouth or people local who are, you know, I think, you know, might be getting onto those waiting lists. So it's an interesting question to ask and perhaps the administrators there, who I think it's run by Midpan, right? Or is it Mercy? I've always forgotten.
Senior housing?
It's Midpan.
Oh, it's managed by several different.
Several groups, yeah. So someone there could probably give us an idea, you know, of how much of that. Uh, because that is definitely classified as low income housing, so I'm gonna figure that out. Good question. Okay, great. Boy, the census numbers are um certainly mixed reliability, aren't they? So um great. Thanks though, Victor, for trying to figure it all out and make sense of it. So no easy task in putting it into a format that we can understand. So appreciate that. Um, okay, there's no really more on that. That was just to receive a report and discuss the data. So we're on our last agendized item, uh, which is our twenty twenty one measure de-allocation transfer. So we are revisiting this. By request by the council. So we're going to get an updated staff report on the status here, correct?
All right, can everybody see this okay?
Yep.
All right. So, good evening again. I'm Brittany Coslino, Associate Planner. And I'm glad to be here with you tonight to present on the twenty twenty one measure D allocation transfer reconsideration. So the city's measure D ordinance provides city council with the discretion to transfer any unused downtown on measure D allocations to the outside of downtown area um after September of each calendar year. And as we've been seeing the past few years with the increase in demand for ADUs, um, mostly in our established neighborhoods that are located outside of downtown, um, council was asked to consider twenty seven requests for such transfers uh this past September, uh, where only twenty allocations were available for transfer. Council approved uh four of these transfers for uh units proposed for deed restricted affordable housing units on Montevista Lane. And tonight, we are happy to bring this item back to you for reconsideration as requested by Councilmember Penrose. And with the four allocations already approved in September, the city council is now being asked to reconsider the remaining twenty three transfer requests uh with only, only sixteen allocations remaining available to transfer. Staff is recommending that all sixteen available allocations be transferred to specified projects. The transfer requests can be categorized into three tiers as shown in the three colored rows on this slide. With tier one including projects that are located within the town center, which is defined by the city's land use plan. And coincides with the defined measure D downtown area, um, but not with the entire uh boundary. And then uh tier two, we have ADU projects located outside of the town center that are all located on infill sites with existing primary residences. And then tier three, we have new single family with ADU projects located outside of the town center, all on vacant infill lots. So these ten units in the top category, um, in the center column here are um and the six ADU projects in this middle box have all demonstrated readiness and are all recommended for approval. Uh, the remaining applicants on the right hand side here are encouraged to resubmit for the twenty twenty two measure D process in January. This map was included as an attachment to your staff report and it shows how the measure D downtown and town center boundaries overlap or don't overlap. And you can see the town center area in the light orange picks up the single family residential neighborhood that is located east of uh Main Street here. And um completes the R two uh residential neighborhood that is located between Highway one and Main Street. So you can see the already approved um affordable housing allocations in the green dots here just outside the downtown boundary, but still within the town center. Then the um ten um town center projects recommended for approval in the blue dots. And the outside town center uh ADU projects also recommended for approval shown in shown in the yellow dots. And we can come back to this map or the previous table anytime during council discussion tonight. I won't dig in deep here, since we do expect some public comment on this item tonight. And this was laid out in your staff report, but there is significant policy support for tonight's recommendation, including in the new land use plan for concentrating new development in the town center and providing for a diverse range of housing types to meet community needs. There is similarly strong policy support in the city's housing element, such as by calling for promotion of infill housing and facilitation of ADU production. So we heard some concerns from council about the impacts of ADU development during the September action and want to take this opportunity to highlight some of the ongoing research that staff has been doing on this topic. And I say ongoing because since the 2017 ADU laws kicked into place, we're only now seeing many of those pipeline ADU projects finish up the permitting process and actually be constructed and occupied for long enough to collect some of this type of data. And so starting with occupancy, ADUs are known to have a lower occupancy rate due to their smaller size, a maximum of 1,000 square feet in the city limits. And in a recent statewide study of ADU characteristics led by UC Berkeley, found that ADUs house an average of one to two persons per household, lower than our average persons per household for primary residences, as you saw Victor going over from the census data. And in many cases, ADUs are providing housing for family members that were already living in the primary residence. So this often means that there is either no new population or impacts on city resources associated with ADUs. Or if there is new population, these impacts may be minimal, especially when compared to the primary residents and can even be compared with a home share program such as hip housing, which also has a program for matching tenants with homeowners of ADUs. And this is an important consideration for Measure D, since it is a population growth measure. I'm moving on to water and sewer. Staff compared our actual water use data for properties before and after they were developed with ADUs in recent years. And again, a bit of a small sample size, but we did find little to no change or even a decrease in usage in some cases that could either be attributed to ADUs having more efficient water fixtures or replacing previously irrigated yard areas. And then sewage volumes are directly related to water usage, so we would expect sewage capacity changes to be similarly modest. And then lastly, for traffic and parking, the UC Berkeley study also found that 40% of ADU tenants do not park any cars on the street and 46% park just one car on the street. This makes sense as the lower occupancy rate of ADUs tends towards lower car ownership rates, which in turn means lower trip generation rates and less impacts on the city's on-street parking supply. And I will hand it over to Jill Ikas to wrap this up for us.
Thank you, Brittany. Just wanted to acknowledge, hello council, nice to see you tonight. And on the last item, we will definitely bring that information forward on, on the ninth. Moving to the end of this presentation, we just want to note that we understand that council is well informed about the benefits of ADUs. And it's appreciated that council members have supported and even served on boards for some of these organizations. We know, for example, on hip housing's website, they have a find a tenant for your ADU feature for their home share program. Home for All, which the city has participated in, features an ADU toolkit. Sematour County via the 21 Elements Group that works with us on all of our housing elements, has an online ADU Resource Center. And Heart of Sematour County, that's the Housing Endowment and Regional Trust, hosts an ADU center and publishes free construction plans. So it's, it's integrated throughout the county to support ADU production. And it's really been helping a lot of cities. We appreciate also, though, that council is seeking commitments to affordability for ADUs. And since council considered this in late September, we've been reviewing the potential to impose affordability requirements on ADUs. We found that most Half Moon Bay ADUs, as noted in the staff report and in the written public comments on this item, are being constructed for family members. Affordability requirements do not really translate for those cases. We've also discussed options with developers and homeowners who are, who have been working on these. And their feedback is that they just might not build the unit if this was imposed upon them, not because of the rent level, but because it's just a lot to ask a single family homeowner to hold a deed restriction or some other legal mechanism that is going to cloud their title in some way. So in summary, it's important to remember that the folks housed in ADUs, they otherwise be in the market for the county's very limited supply of affordable units. ADUs are not subsidized with public funding. They do not draw, draw down affordable housing funds. They don't solve the city's housing needs. Staff understands this and the council understands this. But they soften the need without consuming public resources and infrastructure. Because they're often provided to family and their friends, they also tend to have a local orientation and support extended families or co-housing relationships. Where shared housing costs, shared transportation, sharing childcare can occur on properties that are already developed. So if council remains concerned about ADUs in your thinking through this transfer item tonight with respect to resources, affordability, purpose, et cetera, please bring that forward in the discussion. These units are very important to many Half Moon Bay families. And we are recommending that allocations be transferred for six such units located outside the town center, as Brittany previously presented. Next slide, Brittany. Just remembering this, this yellow tier. These, these six are, they're only ADUs. The plans are ready to go and these are folks that are really, really helping to get going and not having to have the uncertainty of, of being delayed into a whole new cycle of this in January. Next slide, please. Once again, our theme of the night is, you know, working through this item. We just want to remind everyone that we will have a special study session on the ninth at 5:00 PM on Zoom. We're, we're already working on a flyer for Councilmember Jimenez to pick back tomorrow. It will be bilingual and it will follow the format of our e-news announcements. Previously, we will be paying attention to your discussion tonight relative to Measure D, because Measure D is a topic that we'll be covering next week. And next slide. This is a recommendation from your staff report. We are happy to take clarifying questions. We do expect you to have public comment near Branston. So we'll, we'll keep an eye on that for you. We see one hand raised at this point. And there's another one going up. So, um, that's, that's our presentation and we are here to assist you. Thank you.
Great. I see we have three public comments unless there's some pressing clarification questions? Can we move to public comment? Sorry, everyone? Okay. Let's see, so we have four folks. So can you set the timer? And we're now officially opening up for public comment.
Thanks, two minutes or three minutes now?
Let's see, let's see four hands. Yeah, let's try three minutes.
Our first speaker is Tim Pond. Tim, go ahead.
Hello, my name is Tim Pond. Thank you very much for hearing me tonight. I have done the applications for five of these people. I haven't charged anything for the application because I knew it was a dice roll to get these. And the majority of these are for family members, people that really need a housing unit, that have very few options to have other housing. If a parent, a family living with another family in a house, an elderly mother, you know, these, these are the kinds of clients that need these. And it's rare when direct action by a government could help somebody so much as, as it could at this moment to approve these. These people need this housing. And I think the deed restriction comment was well taken. These people want to put a family member in their house. Or, you know, in the case of the other two, they're working people from this town who want the ability for their kids to be able to live in this town, who will not be able to afford to live here. This housing market with a million dollar plus homes cannot possibly sustain young people out of college, these, these kids of these people. And for that reason, I just, I would really hope that you support this. One in particular, the one up on Roosevelt, won't score well with the existing point system, which I think discriminates against lower income neighborhoods by the distance from town. You'd lose some points in the beauty contest to get a Measure D. So I think if this one is denied, it won't fare well in January because of its distance from downtown. And these people by their very location in town are going to suffer. That, that's the Solis, Lisette Solis. So again, I ask you to help if you can here to see through the bigger picture of maybe density or something to this direct help that you could possibly give to these people for these housing units. Thanks.
Thanks, Tim. Next, we have Rachel.
Evening, my name is Rachel Boros. And I just finished an ADU here in the downtown area. And I kind of wanted to speak to the idea that although I bought my house in 2018, taxes have gone up and up. I have two kids, I'm a teacher. And my hope is to live my retirement out here with my family nearby. And so because of Measure D, I was able to build an ADU with my future in mind, hoping that I will be able to have some co-housing opportunities. So I highly recommend that you listen to your staff and that you vote for transferring these allocations. Thanks so much.
Thank you, Rachel.
Our next speaker is Keith.
Hi, my name is Keith Weiner and I live at 459 Poplar Street. Thanks for expanding to three minutes. I won't have to read as fast. We applied for one of the allotments to allow the construction of an ADU at our home. The outcome of the council meeting last month was unexpected. We'd been told by city staff that they supported our project and that it met with the parameters required to be considered approvable. What I heard in the meeting was that staff did indeed support our project and the majority of the other projects that were submitted. I also heard the support of the Community Development Director, the mayor, the city manager, and after some consideration, the vice mayor. What I heard from the council was that the allotment should go to the community and should only be awarded to low rent deed restricted applicants and only to applicants in the downtown area. There's also mentioned that some of the allotments might go to waste by people that decided not to build. So I would just like to express that we are very much a part of this community. We love Half Moon Bay. Our kids have gone to school here from hatch through high school. We contribute to community programs. Vote here, we pay our fair share of taxes here. Our intention in building an ADU is to provide housing first for my 88-year-old father-in-law and eventually for our sons when they finish school and are starting their lives as young adults. This is not a money-making proposition for us. The ADU is to provide multi-generational housing for our family. There's currently no box to check on the application to express that. And perhaps that should go into the newer application you were talking about modifying. Lastly, you know, while I don't think it, it should be necessary, if I have to file a deed restriction saying that I'm going to make this BMR in order to get this approved in a timely manner, I'll do that. I don't think that should be necessary, though. And I don't quite understand why throughout the state, the state law mandates that ADUs need to be approved ministerially in 60 days. But that doesn't apply here and, and that doesn't quite make sense to me. If there are available allotments and you have the discretion to approve these projects, why let them go to waste? And lastly, given approval, our project would commence as soon as those permits are issued. So thank you for your time and I hope you really consider granting these allotments.
Thanks, Keith. Next, we have Belle.
Hi, good evening, city council members. My name is Belle Gorman and I'd also like to speak about the remaining 16 allocations. I've lived at 459 Poplar Street and have lived in Half Moon Bay for over 15 years, raised two sons here. They've gone to public schools, the immersion program all the way through high school. And all of our family's always been involved in the community. In March of 2021, we contacted the city. And as we wanted to build an ADU and were told about the different process that Half Moon Bay follows, we went ahead and finalized our plans and submitted in May, hoping we would receive one of the unused allocations in November. The reason we want to build this 500 square foot ADU in our backyard is for my 88-year-old father. He is close to the point where he cannot live alone. We want to move him here close to us and still allow him his own personal space. Right now, he lives in Virginia and we're quite eager to get him here. It is not an option for us to move to Virginia, nor do we want to. We want to stay here in our community and we do not want to put him in a care facility. We want him to be with family. We're not looking to turn a profit, but to provide multi-generational housing so we can care for my father now and an option for our sons to live in the future. Having our permit denied while 16 allocations go unused not only seems wrong, given the California state laws in our housing crisis, it puts us personally in a horrible situation. We would have to wait again till next January and hope to get approval then. If we would have followed the current state law, we would have had approval last June and we almost done by now. For us, time is critical as my father's needs become greater every month. I'd respectfully like to request the council consider allocating the unused permits so that we can offer housing and care to my elderly father. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Belle. Next, we have Lisa.
Hi, thank you. Can you hear me okay?
Yes.
Great, thanks, council members. My name is Lisa Damrash. I have put in the applications for two of the units in the town center. One is for my personal residence, one is for my brothers. And these are, we're a multi-generational family. One of these units will house the fifth generation of our family to be raised in Half Moon Bay. We are business owners, community members for, you know, over 100 years. And I think the thought of the next generation not being able to live in our hometown is just terrible. And this is an opportunity for us to avoid that. My brother has a disabled child and has a hard time with caregivers. And their unit would be for caregiver housing. I mean, these are to support your community families. You know, my parents are also aging, so that's another option that we may need to use those units for. So I think it's just really important to remember the human element here. These are very important options. There's not money-making. These are for our families that have, in my case, like I said, been here for five generations now, all of, through the school system. You know, my grandparents graduated from Half Moon Bay High School. So it's. So it's really important that we maintain the ability to live in Half Moon Bay. And I really hope the council will consider this transfer. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next, we have Daniel Lamb.
Hello, everyone. I'm Daniel Lamb. I live at 551 Myrtle Street. Mine was the only application for a junior ADU. I live on a very small property. It's a very narrow lot, and we have very little space. The junior ADU will be used by my mother. It'll allow her to have a little bit of independence and privacy that she currently doesn't have when she is here staying with us. I'm a disabled veteran. This project will also provide me with a much more accessible walk-in shower that is desperately needed. So I thank you for your time, and I hope that you will consider passing this measure. Thank you.
Thanks, Daniel. Next, we have Lizette.
Hello, can you guys hear me?
Yes, we can.
Okay, great. Hello, council members. Thank you for the time. My name is Lizette Solis, and I live in 541 Roosevelt. I was raised here in Half Moon Bay, attended the school system Hatch Junior High School. I also now work in my community, supporting families, low-income families as well. I work for a nonprofit. I live with my family in 541 Roosevelt. It's a shared house with my mom and my siblings, but I have a family of my own now. And it's a little hard because my kids are getting older, so they need their privacy. And we are hoping to build this ADU to be able to move in there. And as Tim was saying, if we waited for the next term, it would not benefit us because we would not score good because of where I live. And I want my kids to grow up here in Half Moon Bay like I did, like my siblings and I did. I wouldn't want to move or have them move, but with the prices of housing being so expensive, I don't think I could afford anything here on the coast besides here, living with my mom. So I would hate for my kids to move anywhere else or be raised anywhere else because our community is amazing. I love Half Moon Bay. I love working here. I am part of this community, and I would really appreciate it if you guys could consider my application. Thank you so much for your time, and have a great evening. Thank you.
Thank you.
That concludes public comment.
Comments now closed. We'll now open up for deliberations. Vice Mayor Ruddock, I have to step away for one minute. Would you mind? Recognizing folks for one minute.
Four. I see a hand raised by Councilmember Arbach.
Thank you. There's a lot that's not being discussed in this deliberation. Measure D was passed by the voters in order to control growth in Half Moon Bay. And somehow or another, this has escaped deliberation here. Measure D intent was to concentrate the additional housing in the downtown center. And the existing outside the downtown center allocations have already been granted. That's something that doesn't seem to have gotten across here. It's not that we're restricting development. It's that we're restricting development in accordance with the will of the people who voted for Measure D. And I really think that that's important. The idea that we have to have deed-restricted housing is a little bit crazy. Last September, the council voted for four deed-restricted so-called affordable housing allocations. It turns out that if it's a couple that is renting in any of those four units that we approved, the rent could be $2,700 a month. You tell me if that's affordable. I don't think so. So my perspective is that the downtown center, as defined by our local land use policy that was just approved, doesn't quite coincide with what the original Measure D downtown area was. I understand that. I would support the 10 allocations for the units that are in the downtown center. I will not support the six units that are outside the downtown center. Those people are welcome to apply for Measure D next year in trying to be consistent with the way that the voters have agreed that we want to control growth in Half Moon Bay. So that's where I'm coming from. The way it's set up, it looks like the resolution would not allow us to distinguish between the downtown center and the outside downtown center. And I would definitely want to split that up because I don't want to support additional outside-the-downtown-center units. Those people have a chance to reapply next January, which is only two months away. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Arbach, for providing the background and for moving, yeah, for moving the conversation forward. Thank you. Appreciate that. Councilmember Penrose?
Yes. First off, I want to say I am not against building more housing. I think that Measure D was passed a while ago. We can't do anything that is in violation of it, but we have a very different economic situation now than we did prior and especially when Measure D was passed. Housing costs have gone off the roof, and that means people are leaving. And if you believe our census, we have lost some population. I tend to believe that. And I tend to believe a lot of the people that have left are the children of people who own homes here. They are the parents of people that own homes here. And they are even more probably our workers, our workforce, that cannot afford to live here. That all being said, I am in favor of including the six blue dots, blue dotted units, that are in our town center. I am not in favor of including anything outside of town center unless it is deed-restricted. And by deed-restricted, I mean to extremely low, low, and maybe even moderate income. I don't have a problem with people having homes. I think that that's what we want. We want to keep our kids here. We want to keep our parents at home and not have to put them into institutions. We don't want people living two families in one house without privacy. All of the things that the public said today make total sense to me. But if you're going to build a granny unit for your granny, your father, your children, your brother, a disabled relative, you do not have to charge exorbitant rents to that person. And that's what each one of these people has said tonight. They don't want to make money. It's not about increased income for them. And I think that's laudable. And I think that's where we ought to be going with this. We need to increase housing for those people that currently can't afford it. And this is one way to do that. But $2,700 a month is not affordable. And that's where I'm coming from. So if we can do deed restriction on those units that are outside of the town center, I'm fine with it. If not, I don't approve of those.
Thank you. Councilmember Jimenez?
I was recently, you know, educated and learned about, you know, Measure D. I had an opportunity to speak with Jill, and she gave me some background on Measure D. And it is difficult to make decisions like this. You know, especially when we know, I mean, I know that we need housing for community in Half Moon Bay. I also understand the reason Measure D was passed. You know, it was to protect Half Moon Bay, to make it a sustainable community, healthy, safe, community-based, you know, housing development in a central area. It also talks about, you know, the water usage. You know, of how eventually we have to be able to go by, you know, they say a drought, we have to depend, you know, in San Francisco, you know, to have the right to restrict the water from, you know, from Crystal Springs. So there's a lot of things that we have to think about. But also, you know, I know and I understand the need of housing. Most of the people, I think, maybe all of them who spoke today are requesting, you know, these permits to build an ADU for their loved ones, for their aging parents. And I'm not against that. You know, I'm actually for that. Because if, I mean, I don't own a home, but if I could ever have the opportunity to do one, I would be able, you know, to request to be able to build something, you know, have something for my parents. And it's not about making money. It's about, you know, make it deed-restricted. I'm okay with that. It is unfortunate that when more ADUs were allowed to build in Half Moon Bay, you know, to sustain the housing need, you know, some people took advantage of that on the wrong way. I mean, they are just thinking about why, you know, why not build an ADU and rent the front of the big house and not leave in the back, in the back house, you know? Is what happened. So, you know, as I understand, people who spoke today, you know, that don't want to make money. They want the house, you know, the ADUs for their loved ones, especially for the aging parents and for their children. You know, so approving the downtown, you know, the blue dots, six, I believe they are, you know, and it'd be okay with everybody else, you know, outside of the downtown corridor to be deed-restricted with a contract with the city to make sure, you know, the housing needs for who they say it is. You know, and they're not looking for a large income. Because, you know, I would love to do that. You know, and I mean, I understand. I mean, it is difficult. It's a difficult decision. But if you're not planning to make any money, you know, make it deed-restricted. I mean, if you've been here for generations, and this is the only way you can stay in Half Moon Bay, by building ADUs to be able to support your growing family. I'm not against that. I mean, I hear stories like that all the time. Just, you know, I don't know if you remember, last week during a meeting, I got a message about a family that was, you know, being evicted. The family already moved out. Both parents farm workers. Now they separated the family. Two generations renting in the same place. It is difficult. You know, that's why we have this special meeting next week. We hope to see some light about the housing needing in Half Moon Bay because we are splitting families. Yes, like, you know, the father's moving back to Mexico, the mom's going to stay here with the kids. And yes, another family moved out of, you know, out of Half Moon Bay, moved out into Central Valley where they can afford the rent. So there's two families in one month that moved out that I know. Two parents, both parents, you know, three children, ages, you know, 13, 10, and 6. So it is difficult. So I understand, you know, where these families come from. And, I mean, it is true, you know, the housing prices have changed. The rents are higher. So giving the opportunities to families to stay together, I'm against separating families. I'm for keeping families together. So it is a difficult decision, but if it's deed-restricted for the families, I will approve those ADUs.
Thank you. So let me just make sure I understand where we are here. Councilmember Arbach, you're willing to approve of 10 of the ADUs, correct? Just wanted to make sure I got that right.
Yes.
Correct, okay. Councilmember?
Downtown Center.
Right, downtown centers. And there were 10 of those, right?
Right.
Okay, because I keep hearing six downtown center, but I thought there were 10.
Mr. Mayor and members of council, maybe I can clarify, or Jill could as well. There was a map shown with dots in the downtown center, but those, it's not one for one. Each dot does not represent one allocation. There are 10.
That's right, that's right.
There are 10 in the downtown, and so Councilmember Arbach is correct. If that's his inclination, and if that's the same inclination as Councilmember Penrose and Jimenez, that they support the ones in the downtown. The number is 10, not 6.
Not 6. Okay, that's what I thought. Got it. And that would be true, as you said, for Councilmember Penrose and Jimenez. So we're talking about 10 units downtown. Okay. Councilmember Ruddock, did you have any input on this?
Yeah, I support transferring all 16. And, you know, I think pushing deed restriction now is like a form of hostage-taking. You know, these people have told their family stories. Some of them are under, you know, greater stresses than others, but they're under stress. I'm not going to add to their family's stress by insisting that they go through this deed restriction process. You know, if we want to prioritize deed-restricted ADUs, you know, we can establish a policy to do that, and we can do it, you know, prospectively, you know, going forward. But I'm not going to hold these people hostage now when they're ready to go and have family issues. I think, you know, if you support families, support families. Don't in turn hold them hostage and say you still support families. And it's still more affordable than other forms of housing. I'd rather have some ADUs than empty, high-priced second homes on the coast. We don't have any applications ready in the downtown area. All we're going to do by withholding is creating a bottleneck next year because the people who were denied now are going to apply next year, and then there's new ones. And we're supposed to, by law, be facilitating the ADUs. So I think anything less than transferring these just causes more problems than it solves. So I'm sticking by my guns and supporting all 16. So I'm sticking by my guns and supporting all sixteen.
Thank you. I have some input and then I'll come back. Councilmember, you still have your hand up, right?
Yeah.
Okay, I'll come back to you in a moment.
Okay.
So my understanding is when we had extra Measure D permits, we couldn't, it was use or lose. And so I want to just remind everyone on council that we are considering changing that aspect of Measure D so we can bank them for low-income housing. So just want to put everything, everything out there. So you know, I feel like we're elected to represent everybody. We are here to represent everybody. And frankly, I trust staff has carefully looked at these requests. Folks here on staff are pretty strong housing advocates for affordable low-income housing. With the passage of SB nine, if you're worried about congestion highs, house, this is like nothing compared to what might lay ahead. Where people can simply subdivide and all of a sudden have five or six units. I don't really care if someone wants to move into an ADU because maybe they're on fixed income or they're about to retire and wants to be able to afford to keep their house. I don't really care about that choice. That's, that is a reasonable human choice to me, that if all of a sudden you're gonna retire and you're not quite sure you can afford your mortgage, you want to move into the, I mean, all these pieces, I find incredible that on one hand, you know, you say, well, yeah, if I had a family and I wanted to keep maybe my kids there who can't afford other housing, I would want to do that. Well, you can't have it both ways, we can all, you know, either you sympathize with folks who would like to keep their family, how many times have we heard people would love to have their kids be able to move back here and live here and work here? Probably not for necessarily high-paying jobs, but just to have their family members here. So I'm glad we have consensus on the ten units. I would go for all sixteen and not be against that, I think it's important to represent people who have those family needs and not deny those for the sake of some other principle, which I don't think we're gonna sacrifice for six more units. So I believe the people who have called tonight, I trust our constituents and I trust our staff for making those decisions. So ten's all we can get. Okay, but I feel it's not for the right reasons. We should allow for all sixteen. Okay, I'm done, Councilmember Ruddock.
I do agree with Debbie that deed restricting is an unnecessary burden. Not because I don't believe in affordable housing, I absolutely believe in affordable housing. But the kind of deed restriction that we're talking about for even low income, because deed restricting to low income is still, because of the way low income is defined, is not really affordable. As I said, a twenty seven hundred dollar a month rent is what we approved in September for the so-called four units. So I think it's a charade to, to talk about that kind of, of deed restriction. As I said, I believe in Measure D, I think the, the purpose of Measure D will be served if we allow the, the ten units in the Downtown. I do not support the six units outside the Downtown. And I certainly think that we should be allowed to vote in a way that will separate those two possibilities. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Penrose?
My picture keeps moving around, I'm unmuting other people. I can only reiterate what I said before. In terms of what Councilmember Rarback said that twenty seven hundred dollars a month is not affordable, I, I would have to agree with that. I would think if we were talking about deed restriction, what we're talking about is a percentage of what the average income is at any given time. And currently that's laid out, and I don't know what it is for rent, but I know it's not twenty seven hundred dollars for anything anywhere near considered low income. It's not even moderate income. So I, I I'm not, I'm not opposed to the idea of bringing this back to the table when we have our housing meeting and discussing deed restriction at that point. But I would, I would, I would hope that the council would consider deed restriction of some form or another for those extra allocations that are outside of downtown Half Moon Bay. They have nothing to do with Measure D, Measure D says we want to build in downtown Half Moon Bay, it doesn't say we want to build outside. On the other hand, as I said before, I do believe that we need more housing, even moderate income housing, even, maybe even the high-income housing for some folks. But that's not what Measure D is about. Measure D is about increasing the density in our Downtown. So I'm, I'm waffling a little bit on, on these six units that are outside of the town center. And my reason for that is that it's just six units. And that if we can do something about deed restriction in November at our housing meeting, then I, I'd be satisfied at that point to do it. I think it needs to be a policy that we think about carefully, and we, when we talk about deed restriction, we, we talk about what exactly we're talking about. And that's, you know, deed restriction has got to have many different faces, but we need to know what we're doing before we actually do it, so I'm still waffling on this, this, the six, the six units outside of Town Center.
Councilmember Ruddock?
Yes, could staff put up the map showing those dots again? Okay, so looking at the map, you can see some blue dots and then the highway going down through the middle, and then you see the yellow dots across the road. The yellow ones, the, the six, they are across the road from Downtown. They are basically in the center of Half Moon Bay. You compare where they're located compared to north of Kelly, Miramar, Frenchman's Creek, and then Ocean Colony and Canyata Cove. These are in the center of town. I can walk from my house, which is on the west side, in five minutes I can be in the Town Center. So, you know, I, I think this distinction between the west side and the east side, the west side not being in the Town Center is somewhat specious. I can, I can walk that distance in five minutes. It's, it's in the center of town, it might not be the Town Center is defined by policy, but it's in the center of town. And the people who, you know, live on the west side can easily walk to Downtown or bike to Downtown, take advantage of services. Kids can walk to schools, both Cunha and, and Hatch, you know, within a matter of a few minutes. So I, I think the distinction in this case, you know, is somewhat specious. And I think staff put together, you know, delineated the, the policy foundation which supports this decision. You know, we, we pay them to think these things through. Yes, Measure D, when we have applications for Measure Ds, we want to prioritize those that are close to the official Town Center. But they're not, there's no demand for them right now, so we have these extras. And we can use those extras to support families who we've heard have, you know, quite specific needs, and they're in the center of town, not necessarily the towns in the center of town. So yes, there's a couple of examples, exceptions here, there's Terrace and Roosevelt. But they're just two. And so I, I would continue to support all sixteen. If there's a majority support for ten, I, I do not support holding people hostage on the deed restriction issue at this time, I'm not going to support it. If you want to look at deed restriction prospectively in the future, about how we should do that, I'm happy to do it, but tonight, no. But I, I think staff has made the case for sixteen, and it seems clear to me, and that's what I'm supporting. These people live in the center of town, if not the Town Center.
Thank you, Councilmember Ruddock. So I'd like to make a motion to approve the transfer of the sixteen remaining Downtown based Measure D units and to make sure, to Councilmember Penrose's point, discuss during our housing conversation with the Planning Commission next week, the issue of deed restrictions, what they would look like, you know, trying to find those, what they would look like moving forward. Do I have a second?
I'll second that.
Can we have a roll call vote?
Councilmember Jimenez?
Yes.
Councilmember Penrose?
Yes.
Councilmember Rarback?
No.
Vice Mayor Ruddock?
Yes.
Mayor Brownstone?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. Okay. So let's move on to Commission Committee updates. Brittany?
I'm sorry, Mr. Mayor, I was still digesting the, the completion of that item. We are now moving on to Commission updates, and I believe we do have an update from both Matthew and Jill on recent meetings of their Commissions.
Oh, great, thank you.
Jill, do you want to go first, or do you want me to go first? The eye contact wasn't working on Zoom. All right, thank you, honorable councilmembers, I'll, I'll make this brief at this late hour. We did have a Recreation Commission meeting last week, it was a great meeting. Just a couple of the items that we discussed that I think are important for you to be updated on, they, they received an update on Magnolia Park. And as Scott Phillips mentioned earlier this evening, we'll be holding a, a, a work session, a study session with them at their meeting in December. We cancel the November and December regular meetings because they fall right during the holidays, and then we, we pick a date in the, in the middle to, to make sure we have at least a final meeting. And so that meeting will be on, I believe it's on December eighth, Wednesday, December eighth. So if folks are interested in the planning for Magnolia Park, they should attend that meeting. We also talked about, got an update on Smithfield and the master planning process there, and we plan to do a similar study session with Recreation Committee, Commission at their January meeting. So lots of great work coming from that group. We had a presentation from Coast Pride during our meeting last month, of course, that was LGBTQ History Month, and we, we received a very nice presentation from Jenny Walter at Coast Pride, and we talked about how Recreation in Half Moon Bay could better serve the LGBTQ community and think about them as we plan our, our programs and our activities and collect information about our constituents. We received a great update on the public art policy from Victor Gaipan, who you heard from earlier this evening, and received direction from the Rec Commission to bring that forward to you all for final approval at the first meeting in December. And we also received a brief update on a video camera usage policy that we're developing at the staff level to provide video surveillance at some of our properties, including the Ted Adcock Community Center and the skate park in hopes to resolve some issues we've had with some of the behavior of our skate park users and outside of the Recreation Center, some more to come on that. And that's all I have, unless there's any questions.
Thank you, Matthew.
Thank you.
And was there another Jill, right?
Thank you, I'm also going to catch up with my notes, thank you Mayor and thank you Council. And we are very, very focused on preparing for your November ninth meeting, and you just gave us a couple more tasks to add to the agenda, so be prepared for a long meeting, please, we are going to try hard to provide some breaks, as you saw, they're going to be structured into the schedule. Your packet will go out this week, it's thin. Our recommendation for our preparing for this meeting is to take another cruise through Chapter Two of your land use plan, that is the Development Chapter, and it is packed with apps and policy. And that should be just a good piece for you to kind of get your bearings, we're going to look at a lot of different properties. I think I see the Vice Mayor's hand raised, and I don't know if it's this. No, okay, I will keep going. So also, the Commission, Planning Commission has been quite busy, last meeting, they approved two single-family homes, they, you know, any, any site that we have left in our, our different neighborhoods tend, they all tend to be a bit challenging, so the Commission works hard to get these approved, one of them did have an ADU, and that was, that was great. In the first meeting in October, the Planning Commission had a scoping session for the Poplar Gateways Bluff Top Park project, and that is to support the scope of the environmental impact report that is currently in preparation. This is one of your capital improvement program projects. Going forward, we are looking at canceling the Planning Commission's meeting on Thanksgiving week and possibly having a special meeting on November thirtieth. This would support everyone's plans as well as staff's workload, we are, we're a little bit clouded right now, so we need a little more time. There will be one Planning Commission meeting in December, I think it's December fourteenth. Important end-of-year items, we're expecting to see possibly the Poplar Complete Streets project, that would be the soonest it could move forward. That project is actually going to the Bicycle and Pedestrian Advisory Committee first on Thursday this, this week. Coastside County Water District has a water extension project that requires environmental review, and we're trying to get that also to the Planning Commission before the end of the year. So the Commission is, has a wide range of projects, we are also, of course, working with the Architectural Advisory Committee. They recently looked at a specific parklet application for Victoria and Mare and Bartera down near the Main Street Bridge. The next stop for that application The next stop for that application will be the Planning Commission. Staff is also working on, as, as you heard in a update, I think, two weeks ago, a parklet, a downtown parklet program. And outreach will be moving forward, but we did get initial feedback from the Architectural Advisory Committee. It was very positive and very constructive. They had a lot of good ideas about how to really maximize public use of our public right of way. And I think that is about it, although we do, we are hoping for Maine and Kelly. That's the project site right across the street from City Hall, the former gas station site. But it's been through the Architectural Advisory Committee several times, and we're hoping to bring it to them in November for a final review before that would move on to the Planning Commission for a poll hearing. And that does it for Architectural Advisory Committee and Planning Commission. Thanks.
That's fair. Thank you, Jill, for the update. Really appreciate that. I'm looking forward to next week. Okay. Any government commission committee updates, any city council reports? Councilmember Jimenez?
Yeah, I just want to share with you, I don't know, you visited downtown Half Moon Bay over the weekend. ALS, collaboration with the Latino Valley Council, the city of Half Moon Bay, had, I think, probably the most beautiful ofrenda for Day of the Dead in the Bay Area. I believe last year was also one of the best ones in the Bay Area. Even, I don't know, even to the point that the Mexican consulate came to visit last year. This year, I believe it was planned to take it down today on the second. Today's Day of the Dead celebration. But because of the rain that we had yesterday, it had to go down on Sunday. But even with that, it was Friday night. It was a large crowd. Saturday, all day, there was a large crowd, and Sunday as well. A lot of people came by and trick-or-treaters even during the middle of the day. So Half Moon Bay had a beautiful ofrenda over the weekend.
It was beautiful. Thank you, Joaquin. Appreciate that. Thank you, ALS, for artistic effort. Councilmember Rarback?
Thank you. I'd like to, if this is the appropriate time, to request an agenda item. Is that right?
Yeah, I don't think, well, is there no other?
Okay, I, I see Bob is shaking his head, so. I would like to agendize a resolution requiring full vaccination for anybody working for the city. Full COVID vaccination, obviously, for anybody working for the city inside city limits, and that would include contractors, sheriff, anybody that has business that's related to employment with the city.
Have a second on that?
I'll second that.
Okay, got a second out of third. Great. Okay, will do.
Thank you.
Conversation. All right. City matter, is there anything I'm forgetting here? I think we're all done. Got through our agenda. Just want to make sure. All right, thanks, everybody. Good work this evening. Looking very much forward to our housing conversation next week. And make sure we get some hours for Councilmember Jimenez out there, so for tomorrow.
I'll be there to pick him up.
All right. You didn't say how many, you know, you said how many you want.
I know. How many you want to give me? A thousand? I'll take him up. I, I have a crew that can deliver them all over town.
Well, I'm sure you'll sort that out, how many you need there, so let somebody know so they can have them ready for you. Okay, great, everybody. Thank you very much, and have a good evening. Take care.
Thank you.
Bye. Thank you.